Turn on my mic. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, February 26, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Good afternoon, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Present.
And Chair Serna.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right, very good. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd please read our statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government shares channel on the Comcast and DirecTV Universe cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, March 2, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form on the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the meeting. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical reasons or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I want to welcome everyone that has taken time out of their schedules to join us here in chambers this afternoon. We have a light agenda in terms of the number of items. However, I know that there are a number of members of the public that wish to address the Board, and certainly you're welcome and invited to do so on our one timed matter. However, we are going to begin, as we normally do, our hearing sessions with public comment on items not on agenda, and I'll just remind everyone that you're certainly, again, welcome to address the Board on any item that's not on our posted agenda. The Brown Act, which is our statewide sunshine law in terms of meeting notices and how we carry ourselves to make sure that we do the public's business in front of the public, restricts our ability to respond in great detail to any of the items or issues or subject matter that you may bring up during off-agenda. So just please realize we're not ignoring you. It's that state law really restricts our ability to engage with you on anything that's not on the agenda. We do have a timed limit of two minutes per speaker, and that is the protocol here so that everyone who wishes to address the Board has the opportunity to do so. So with that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first member of the public that wishes to address us on off-agenda?
We have one speaker for off-agenda, and that would be Jeffrey Tartagilia.
Jeffrey, good to see you.
This should be able to, you should be able to hear me. First item I'm going to draw attention to is simply there was a number of events that occurred this month and extremely hard to find them on any calendar. You, as members, know what you have in front of your next month calendar. I'm suggesting that it would be nice for the public to be able to see items, even though you may change and move the time on there. This became apparent to me because Channel 3 reported that you were having this item related to the jail today, but I first thought it was at 10:00 in the morning. So I came because right now I have had cataract surgery, so I can see Sacramento County, but I can't see anything electronically out there, period, otherwise, print-wise and everything else. The second item I will remind to you is your outside trash containers. It's not real clear that they are trash containers versus, so I wanted to throw away a pizza box and was unclear where I needed to put that. It's just an item through there is realizing you may know it and the public may know it, but may not be clear how often the trash can gets used outside, front or back. At first, I thought you didn't have any outside, just inside. That's my public comment until we get to related to the jails.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
And that concludes the public comments that I have.
All right, very good. Then our next item is our one and only hearing matter. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the item?
Item number two, contract number 81710, County of Sacramento Main Jail Intake and Health Services Facility Peer Review. Approved Recommendations in the County of Sacramento Intake and Health Services Facility Comprehensive Peer Review Final Report.
Thank you, Supervisors. Before we get started with the CGL report, we've asked Deputy County Executive Sylvester Fadell to come up and give a little background on it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Chair Serna, members of the Board, Sylvester Fadell, Deputy County Executive for Administrative Services. In view of the importance of this item, I'm going to give a very quick backdrop into how we got to this position, and in front of your screens, a sort of a pictographic layout of the sequencing of all the actions that was taken up to this point. At the Board of Supervisors meeting on August 8, 2023, we discussed the Jail Annex Project and the estimated cost. Concerns were raised both from the Board and from several different areas regarding the project cost and the increase in scope of the project, leading to county leadership making a recommendation to the Board to consider pausing the overall project, and the Board agreed, and the project was paused to seek a third-party peer review, as is typically standard in the industry. It's important to state very clearly for the record that during the course of this entire review process, county executives, county professionals, were not involved in making the ultimate decision that is going to be presented to the Board today. We sort of at some level displayed a high level of professional humility. We then tried to share our beliefs, our recommendations with the team. They acted independently, and Brian Lee is going to be presenting that information to the Board solely based on their findings and recommendations. The decision to pause again was simply to ensure that an informed choice, which is essential for such a significant construction project, was followed and a good decision is made. In January of 2024, the county released a request for proposal seeking qualified firms for the peer review. This led to the selection of CGL companies, which the Board approved on April 9 of 2024. The peer review process essentially is to access the Jail Annex Project documentation by Norton Lewis, including programming and conceptual plans to determine adherence to Bex practices, compliance with the May's consent decree. CGL, of course, has completed the task that has been assigned to them. They're present in the chambers today. They're going to lay out their presentation, be ready to take questions, and at the end of CGL's presentation, both Eric, the Public Safety and Justice Deputy County Executive, Siobhan Cotary, Deputy County Executive for Social Services, and myself will be here to respond to questions relating to our independent agency areas. But again, just to restate, this is entirely CGL's recommendation, and the county is actually asking for the Board to accept this recommendation so we can proceed with some of the key steps that has to be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Brian Lee. I'm a Vice President with CGL Companies that was contracted to do the third-party peer review. So going through the, I have a quick presentation to kind of share the overview of how we approached the project, our findings and recommendations, and then from there, obviously, I'll answer questions during the presentation, after the presentation, or however you see fit. Next slide, please. Oh, do I have a clicker? Here it is. Thank you. So the agenda for the presentation is just to give a quick overview of the project as it was presented to CGL Companies, discussing the methodology, how our project team approached the project, again, our findings and specific findings to six questions that were presented to us in the scope of work, and from there, we'll discuss our recommendations and then questions. Okay? So the objectives of the peer review project were to examine and verify IHSF, the intake and health services facilities likelihood of achieving compliance with the May's consent decree as far as the work that had previously been done, examine if less costly methods were explored in the development of the plan as it was presented, and to answer specific questions outlined in the scope of services and to make recommendations. Okay?
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm going to have you back up one slide.
Okay.
And just so you're familiar with how we tend to treat these presentations, we tend to ask a lot of questions in the
That's great, yeah.
...in the process of you delivering the information, so please bear with us. So in terms of the objectives here, the first bullet is kind of a forensic look back, right?
Yes, absolutely.
But was there, remind us, was there an inquiry that was either offered by staff or by us or by the public that really asked the question, should, moving forward, should least-cost, lower-cost alternatives be pursued?
If I understand your question correctly, yes, in the form of six questions that were outlined in the scope of work, given the information provided, specifically, we reviewed the draft program presented by Norton Lewis, conceptual design, and the May's consent decree, and there were six questions that were very specifically asked with that information in mind, should the county pursue with the project? Does that accurately answer the question?
Well, yeah, I mean, just speaking for myself, my other colleagues might have tangential questions here to the ones you've outlined in the objective list here, but for me, what's really interesting and important for me to consider is whether or not, moving forward, there is a hopefully much lower-cost alternative that still meets the May's consent decree. That's, I've been a bit of a dissenter on the project mostly because of the extraordinary initial cost, but then, you know, the second time, third time, we saw the cost adjustments increase the way they did, that really kept on placing even more seeds of doubt in my back of my mind, so that's what I'm interested in understanding.
Yes, and that was specifically one of the questions, if less costly options were explored, so.
Well, no, no, not, not were they explored, will they be explored?
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I also want to point out before
Sorry, one more question here from Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to put kind of a finer point on the Chair's question because I think this is a question I had in my mind as I was reading your report, and it speaks to, I think, the genesis of what he's asking, and that is, in your scope of work, you were asked to review the work that had previously been done and the options that that work had presented.
That's correct.
Not necessarily to come up with new solutions
I see.
that would be a different path forward.
That's accurate, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. That's absolutely correct. We were looking back at the work that had been done, and to clarify the point that I was just about to make, I think it's important to indicate that this is a third-party peer review, and this was intended to be an independent review, so we did not have the opportunity and nor was it intended for us to actually talk to Norton Lewis and other groups that performed the work. It was strictly third-party. And by making that point, I will offer that the project was approached from the perspective of CGL Companies and how we might have approached this project, that to say, obviously, CGL is another vendor that does similar type of work, so we're not some type of, you know, governing authority that says this was the right way or the wrong way. We're merely offering our input and recommendations based on the work that we've seen done from our perspective and how we would have approached it. Okay? So, real quick, the project methodology, how the project team approached the peer review, we first connect, we first commenced a project kickoff. The reason for the project kickoff, and if I haven't mentioned this, I was the project director, leading the project from CGL's side, and the purpose for the project kickoff is something that we do on all of the projects to meet with the client and to ensure that we have a clear understanding of the scope of work and the expectations of the work that we do, the timelines, and to establish the lines of communication, who will be our direct points of contact during the project, and to make sure that we're meeting deadlines and deliverables as expected by the client. So that's always the beginning of the project. From there, we had a pretty substantial data request, and we commenced to data collection and stakeholder interviews. And I will mention that there's quite a bit of data that had to be reviewed for this project, most centered to that part of the project being the May's consent decree and the remedial plan. So those are very specific documents that lay out certain requirements, and then, of course, we had, as I mentioned earlier, the conceptual design, the space program, and there was a Marshall Kitchen study, there was a population reduction study, those are some of the things that were reviewed, but departmental policy and plans, it was a pretty substantial data review. Also, we commenced the interview of over 40 stakeholders in this project, and if you, I think it would be helpful for me to list who the, not by name, but by position, of all the stakeholders that were interviewed, just to maybe alleviate some questions that you might have. So, and again, a lot of the people that we interviewed may have had the same titles, so this is just a list of titles of folks that we did interview. Behavioral Health Psychiatric Manager of the Sacramento County Adult Correctional Mental Health Services, Captain Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, Chief Assistant Public Defender from the Public Defender's Office, Chief of Architectural Services Division, Department of General Services, Medical Director of the Adult Correctional Mental Health, Compliance Commander Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, Court Appointed Experts for the May's Consent Decree, Members of the Public Group Decarcerate Sacramento, Deputy County Council, County of Sacramento, Deputy County Executive Sacramento County Public Safety and Justice Agency, Deputy Director, Department of General Services, Executive Lieutenant, Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, Health Services Administrator Sacramento County Adult Correctional Health, IHSF Project Manager from the Department of General Services, the then interim Director of Department of General Services, Operations Commander Sacramento County Sheriff's Operations Commander, the Plaintiff's Class Counsel, the Sheriff Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, Supervising Deputy County Council, County of Sacramento, Undersheriff Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, and that's the list of titles and positions that we interviewed as part of our stakeholder interviews.
Can I, can I ask about the nature and the length of that list? Well, first of all, have you done this type of work before for, not specific necessarily to a consent decree, satisfying the parameters of a consent decree, but doing a peer review on a facility similar to this?
To answer the question specifically, we have done this type of work, but every project is different.
Okay.
And we have not specifically engaged in what has been referred to as a peer review. However, oftentimes, we are contracted in different capacities for very similar projects where we may act as the owner's representative, we may act as advisory to the owner for operational support, so it is the work that we do in our firm to review this type of work, make recommendations
Sure.
for this type of project.
So where I'm going with it is, in your experience, that list and kind of the variety of the parties on that list, is, do you feel that this has been somewhat exhaustive in terms of kind of covering the nature of acquiring different perspectives?
Yes, I thought it was a great list. We've got perspectives from all the way around the project, for those that are in support of the project, those against the project, those who may not necessarily have an opinion in the project, but it was helpful for us to talk to the range, including, of course, class counsel and the court-appointed experts. I think those were important interviews, but we did also, like I said, talk to members of the community, and we were present on our last onsite visit during the project. We did listen to a wide range of public comment during previous Board meetings. And also, I did spend quite a bit of time reviewing past Board of Supervisors meetings, public comments, and things like that that are available on the website.
Sure, thank you.
From there, after data collection and review, or during data review, we conducted, the project team came out for a site visit to actually walk the two jail sites, the Rio Consumers Correctional Center and the main jail downtown. We got extensive tours from staff, from the sheriff's office, from the Department of General Services, from the Adult Correctional Health, and were able to personally walk around and physically view some of the issues that are currently being worked on as a result of this project. Again, like I said, we did listening sessions during that and attended a couple of Board meetings during that time. Again, after we were, after we left the site, we went back and continued our information review, we continued, we continued stakeholder interviews throughout the process as natural in many of these projects. As you get further into the project, there's recommendations of additional people to talk to, so that continued. And from there, after our information review and analysis and a lot of collaboration internally with our project team, we drafted our reports and recommendations and put together that report that I'm talking about here today. Again, as I, as I had mentioned earlier, being the fact that we approached this project from our own firm's perspective and how we would have approached this work, it's important for me to make note to the Board, we did, we did note that the time of the project in which we came in to do the review is very early on in that project. This is conceptual design phase, and I say that as a disclaimer because a lot of the things that we may have pointed out or asked for more information on likely could have been resolved later in the process through the extensive phase of design, development, construction design, and whatnot. So again, from our perspective and our standpoint, the vendors that did this work were very early on in the process, and it's very likely that some of the questions that we had or the information that we came across might have naturally been resolved in that process, but we're offering our viewpoint from the perspective of as it was at the time that we reviewed it. Okay? So from there, the presentation, I get into referring to the report and the six specific questions that were outlined in the scope of work, and we tried to stick specifically to those questions to answer as directly as possible, and so that's the intent of the rest of this presentation is to help understand the findings or the answers to those questions. So the first question stated was, does the draft architectural program and conceptual plans respond to all appropriate requirements? In our review, we found that the architectural program and conceptual design fell short of achieving compliance in the May's consent decree in some specific areas. Those specific areas of note were brought to our attention by the May's consent decree court-appointed experts. So that information that we pulled to come to this finding was from those individuals. It was also brought to our attention, again, as I just previously mentioned, we were at an early phase in the project. It was brought to our attention that possibly the next step in the project was for the contracted vendor to engage in contact with the court-appointed experts for a full review of those conceptual designs. So again, that information that we found by talking to them likely could have been resolved had we reviewed this after the vendor had the opportunity to collaborate with the court-appointed experts. The peer review found that the architectural program and conceptual design fell short in specific areas of the standards of the American Correctional Association, and specifically that was by our architectural review. We have architects that were part of this peer review, and those were directly related to the size of some of the recreation spaces in the conceptual design. And again, those are standards of the American Correctional Association, and I will point out, compliance with the American Correctional Association is strictly voluntary, it's not required, so that was just something that was pointed out in the process and not necessarily required by the vendor.
So let me ask you, based on that explanation, why is, why is that bullet point on this slide? What does it say at the top? It says appropriate requirements. So if it's not a requirement, you just state it's not, it's not a requirement, it's a standard. I was going to, I was going to go here, go so what you just said
Okay.
because I thought it popped off the page at me that if it's a standard, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's codified in law.
Sure, it's not.
Okay.
You're correct.
So, okay, so to me, that's not a requirement, that's a standard, that belongs on a slide that says standards.
Yes.
So I think it's a really important distinction that I'm glad you just pointed out.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to
Okay.
I wanted you to hear from me that that really stood out, that, and maybe have more questions and then be satisfied with that because
Yeah.
I certainly know as a, as a urban planner in a past life that there are standards that the American
Right.
Planning Association offers that aren't, that they're, you know, meant as good professional practices.
Exactly.
Right? That's very different than something
Exactly.
that's codified.
Yeah, no, it's a valid point. Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. And again, again, approaching this project And again, again, approaching this project as our firm would, you're absolutely correct, it's not a standard, or I'm sorry, it's not a requirement. It is a standard if you're looking to achieve accreditation in your, and a lot of people don't care about accreditation. However, from our firm's perspective, we always aim to design a facility that would have the ability to meet those standards for accreditation. But your point is well taken, it's not requirement.
I assume the American Correctional Association has been around for some time?
Yes.
Do we know whether or not the current jail was even, did it meet the standards of the association when it was initially built?
I, I couldn't answer that question.
Okay.
Standards have evolved over time and accreditation. I do not believe, if I recall correctly, that the jail has ever received accreditation. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it wasn't built to those standards. Some people just don't seek that accreditation.
Sure, no, I understand, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. And the peer review determined that the architectural program and conceptual design require more planning work regarding potential changes in the population's systems estimate. And again, that's referring to our, our last discussion, that might be more opinion-based than standards-based. Question number two. "Does the draft architectural program and conceptual plans exceed the requirements? If yes, is there sufficient justification to meet the functional requirements of the project?" The peer review found that the IHSF space program and conceptual design included program space not specifically required to achieve compliance in the May's Consent Decree. However, the review also determined that there was adequate justification that exists in the planning and designing of a modern correctional facility to warrant additional space. And the question has been asked during our, our work, the, the differentiation between question one and number two, right? Because the, the first question was, "Does it respond to all requirements? And then does it exceed?" And I understand how the, the answer to that question could be a bit confusing. So in the planning of a, a modern jail facility, or any jail facility for that matter, especially in the, in light of a federal consent decree, there are obviously a lot of requirements in that consent decree that ask for specific, perhaps specific space, specific practices. So the reason why the answers vary here is the, to the first question, it fell short in very specific areas of the May's Consent Decree, as I pointed out. According to the court appoint, the court appointed expert, there was not sufficient space for certain medical and mental health staff. However, the same program did include additional space that was not specifically called out or required in the May's Consent Decree. And one of the examples is, you know, staff support space. There is nothing that specifically is called out in the May's Consent Decree that requires there to be an employee break room, or a gym, or locker rooms, or anything like that. And I, I will point out that the plan, the, the space that exceeded what is required in the May's Consent Decree was fairly minimal, in my opinion. It wasn't a lot of space. But it was consistent with the second part of that question was it's very common in the design of a modern correctional facility that you would add some of these spaces to improve upon the functionality of that space. So there were some very specific areas and a lot of those were employee support space. There may have been circulation areas, hallways, and things like that that weren't specifically called out in the May's Consent Decree. But square footage-wise, yes, we're in excess of what's specifically required. So that's the reason for the differentiation in those two answers.
I really applaud your explanation of that. I think it's something critical for us to consider. And let me, let's see if I can put a finer point on, on it. If, if we were looking at, at satisfaction of the consent decree from purely, you know, every single red cent that is being proposed is gonna go to meet the strict requirements of the consent decree versus what would even be kind of the professional expectation of the architect or the engineer that if, let's say you're going to, you know, have to tear down certain space to accommodate the construction of new space just to meet the consent decree, while at the same time, you might want to put in that gym, you might want to put in that locker room, whatever. Does it make sense to think from a budget perspective of, okay, if we're gonna have two buckets of, of funds, public funds, to, to do this, you'd have the funding that is strictly just to meet the architectural engineering requirements to meet consent decree? And yes, it does make sense perhaps to do that, you know, gym for, for personnel, but that should come from a different source, like for instance, the sheriff's budget, right? So is that, is that the right way to kind of compartmentalize somewhat what you're saying?
I think the way you're explaining, my explanation is accurate. Yes, I think that's a reasonable approach. Whether or not that's the approach that you all choose to take, obviously it's different from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I will point out, however, in, as you were explaining that, one of the things that was noted during our peer review was the fact that there is a specific call-out in the May's Consent Decree that refers to staffing and having sufficient staff to operate and maintain the jail. So there, some of the space that may not be called out, like the staff support space, may not, it may not say in the May's Consent Decree you need a gym or a break room. But when you're experiencing staff shortages and staff have options of places that they want to work, it makes sense in the design of a correctional facility that you would consider those things in the design of that facility.
I don't dispute that. I think that's a valid point. I'm just kind of approaching it a little differently, just, just from the standpoint of, you know, where, what, what agency should bear the cost of which component parts? Because, I mean, the May's Consent Decree does not say build a gym.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So if we were just gonna kind of, you know, collectively think of how do we compartmentalize appropriate cost distribution to, to aid, to different agencies? Doesn't seem like you have any disagreement with that kind of assessment.
No, I, I don't, I mean, that's obviously an internal policy decision of that, but I've, I've seen that approach, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, question number three. "Did the draft architectural program and conceptual plan fail to consider less costly or more efficient ways to achieve compliance with the May's Consent Decree?" And our answer here was it is unclear with the information provided whether or not less costly options were considered. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, this was conducted as a, a third-party assessment that was separate of, so we did not specifically have opportunity to interview or talk to the, the vendors that conducted this work. So with the information that was provided to us, we did not, we did not come across any less costly options or those conversations and whether or not they did occur. We do have some recommendations later on in the presentation that we think are helpful in that conversation moving forward, however.
Thank you.
Question number four. "If new construction is required, how will the vacated space be used to meet the May's Consent Decree?" We determined in our review, just with what we found in the May's Consent Decree, the requirements, you know, on our, based on our opinion in our review, either major renovation or construction would be required to achieve compliance with the May's Consent Decree. Again, that's our opinion from our professional standpoint. If the county's decision is to move forward with the IHSF in its current form, we feel like the, the proposal by Nocton Lewis, the vendor, was well thought out in what happens with the backfill space. It's referred to as backfill space in the draft architectural program. One other thing that I would like to point out that we found in the review, just to bring to your attention, again, as we reviewed all of this information, we also reviewed local media sources, stories, and things like that. And we noticed, there was a lot of references to cost, how much the project would cost, and it was very specific to certain phases of the project or elements of the project. We did notice in our discussions and in our review that nobody ever seemed to reference a cost of the backfill. What we found was all of the costs and the cost estimating that was done was on the new construction of IHSF. Although the space program lays out how the old space should be used, there, I don't believe there was an estimate or any discussion about how much that renovation of backfill space would be. And it's our opinion, based on the amount of space, that it would be a substantial cost that may need to be considered. Okay? Question number five. "Can the IHSF project's scope be reduced while meeting the May's Consent Decree requirements?" The peer review concluded the possibility of reducing scope while achieving compliance in the May's Consent Decree is unlikely. And again, that's based on the fact of our findings that court-appointed experts cited that there was a lack of space for certain functions within the jail. And another concern that we had during this review process was some of the changes that were coming to the local community here as far as potential impacts to criminal justice populations. And specifically, I'll refer to the passage of, I believe, Proposition 36 in November. So that obviously wasn't information available when this work was done previously. However, in our recommendations, I talk about population analysis being done. We did review the population reduction study that was conducted in those recommendations. However, again, from the perspective of CGL, we feel like there, there would be benefit of a more robust population analysis that doesn't only consider one option, that may consider several different options like changes in legislation, changes in the local population, all of those things that may have an impact on the needs of the jail moving forward.
I'm gonna stop you here. Going back to my last line of questioning, given your response here, isn't there a footnote though to this? Because based on what you said earlier, if I heard you correctly, that, for instance, you could reduce, we could reduce the scope to meet the consent decree by withdrawing the, the need for constructing the staff, the staff space, right? Generally, staff space. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't construct it, we just wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the budget for how we're meeting May's consent.
I see.
So do you agree?
I see, so your, your point is, in your previous explanation of the buckets of money, could the scope be reduced to just meet the May's Consent Decree? That's an interesting perspective. I would, I would have to go back and look at that. Again, we approached it from the totality of the project and didn't, we didn't look at it in that light of the different buckets of money. But with that question, I think that would probably require some further analysis on our part. From, from what we found though, again, the excesses that were noted in the space program were negligible in terms of the amount of space. The shortfalls were, were a little bit more substantial than that. So the overall thought is that it's unlikely that the scope could be reduced. But if you're, if you're approaching it from that standpoint of just specific to compliance in this bucket of money to build that part of the facility and you're funding the rest of the project with something else, I, I suppose that could require some further analysis. And just of note, for those, I, I just did a quick check earlier this week. I reached out to the sheriff's department to find out if there have been any population changes with the jail. And there has been somewhat of an increase since the passage. I don't know if it's related to Proposition 36, but I've noted from December until this week, there's been an addition of about 200 in the daily population of the jail. So again, I'll talk about that a little bit more in the recommendations of a more robust of a population analysis. And finally, question number six. This was kind of an open-ended. "What questions should the county consider in reviewing the draft program?" These kind of fall a little bit under and get to some of our recommendations. Again, with the approach that we would take from our firm, some of the questions that might be worth, worthy of asking is how to achieve better jail functionality and improve outcomes of those involved in the criminal justice system? And again, that's with the additional planning work that I'll, I'll talk about here in a minute. The total cost of ownership of all options. That bullet point was specifically related to something that comes in, in the recommendations of facility conditions assessments. And also, instead of the, the narrow focus to the main jail and compliance with the May's Consent Decree, what are some of the other systems and infrastructure that may be coming due for replacement or overhaul during this process? So just other things to consider there. The current status of the jail population reduction efforts. The impact of Proposition 36. And do the jail management strategies reflect best and most current practices? To kind of expand on that a little bit, it's rare. Most, most jails that are constructed, you know, can be 50 to 100-year buildings typically. And they're very hard facilities, they're masonry, they're concrete and steel. So the way that those buildings are constructed, constructed, designed, and laid out at the time makes it very difficult over the passage of time to change operations in the way that things are done. So the point of this bullet point was, while there is this opportunity, if you are considering the construction or renovation of a jail, should more time be spent to see that those designs and layouts reflect the best practices or some of the changes that may come in the future? Just, you know, taking advantage of that opportunity.
Excuse me, Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you Chair. So a, a lot of import is being placed on Proposition 36 and its impact on the population. Understandably, it will have impact. What I'm, in reading the report, it's, seems like we're not also factoring in, or at least it doesn't seem like we're factoring in enough, just the fact that this is a 40-year-old facility and the county of Sacramento is in a very different place population-wise, which would mean, you know, that crime would obviously go up or the number of people committing crime would go up with population rates. We, I don't see very much put into just the fact that the population impact on this, on this facility that's 40 years old.
Yeah, if, if we didn't do a good job of explaining that, I apologize, but that is actually probably one of the, the central points of the recommendations is an actual population analysis.
Right.
And, and you know, we did, we did have the opportunity to interview folks that took part in the population reduction study. And I think there is some thought in the community that some people don't have a high level of faith in population studies and whether or not they're accurate. Again, from the perspective of CGL and where we come from, we feel very strongly about conducting the population and we think it's a starting point that's necessary and required that considers all different outcomes or different possibilities and changes of population, because you're absolutely correct. Is the community growing? Is it reducing? What are the type of people there? Are younger people living here, is the construct? All of these things have impacts on population aside from Proposition 36, which I think is your point. And, and again, the age of the facility, that's, that's a great point as well. So, and what efforts are being carried out in the current facilitation, the, the facility for the reduction of recidivism, all of those things? Those, so that's, again, this is a cornerstone of the work that CGL does is population analysis, again, which is why we felt strongly about this. And it may be, again, not speaking to the other firms that took part in this, those conversations may have happened or perhaps that wasn't considered at the time. Perhaps there was a directive to build something specifically to meet the May's Consent Decree as, as being discussed. I don't know, we didn't have the opportunity to talk to them. But again, we were very early on in that process. So your question is noted, I think you're, you're correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see. Okay, where I left off, do current jail conditions assist in attracting the highest-qualified employees to achieve compliance? Again, I touched on that a little bit earlier. I think this is an element that gets, it often gets dropped out in many of the jail projects or the facility projects that I've worked on in the past and I'm working on currently that the firm's working on. It's pretty commonplace, you know, they're expensive facilities, it's a big decision and it's a huge commitment for local communities, and typically, when it comes time for value engineering or to cut costs, usually the first elements of those plans to go are employee support spaces, things that, that accommodate employees and things like that. And I just wanted to put that question there because there's a real impact to that. You know, there's, in the, today's day and age, there's a lot of choices, there's a lot of places to work that bring less challenging conditions, a lot of people work from home, there's more positive environments to work in. So I just, I wanted to point that out, we wanted to point that out because that is an element of the May's consent decree to ensure sufficient staffing. And so I just, I don't want that to be lost on the discussions of other spaces. Have court-appointed experts been consulted? I think we've, we've achieved this, that they have not been, but they were going to be in the, in the next phase of this project. And how will backfill space impact the projected budget? Again, that was an important one because I had not heard that mentioned throughout the, the process of this project, the, the backfill space seemed to be kind of something that people didn't have a lot of knowledge about, and we think that could be a substantial cost. So, moving forward, these are our recommendations, and again, based on our opinion and the information that we had, we offer these recommendations. Suspend the current IHSF project, and in parentheses, design-build only. We made that distinction because I know, or we know from the project team's standpoint, there's a lot of work going on outside of the IHSF planning that's being conducted currently to achieve compliance. So when we say suspend the project, we're merely talking about the, the planning and construction of the, the renovation in addition to main jail until the below steps are completed. Number two, establish a jail system planning compliance oversight committee comprised of representation from all criminal justice system stakeholder agencies in the Sacramento County Government, and a charter outlining, outlining the members, their roles, reporting structure and goals. I don't know if there's any, any questions on this one, but this is one that I personally feel strongly about because of the number of stakeholder groups that are involved. It's typically not, a county jail justice system is not overseen by one agency, there's multiple agencies, there's multiple elected officials, departments, a lot of, a lot of groups have a stake in those discussions. And as part of our review, we found that there were a lot of different ideas about what the priority was in this project. So we felt that moving forward, establishing such a committee that strictly, or that specifically outlined membership in that committee and kind of recorded the discussions and the decisions that were made may be helpful moving forward in this process. Contract the following planning services for a jail system master plan, facility conditions assessments, population analysis, operational analysis, and space programming. I, I refer to this as a jail system master plan, and I understand, based on our review, there was a lot of planning work that was done. So what I call a master plan, made by other firms, be considered to have been complete in this project. However, I feel that engaging in an actual system master plan that's very specifically referenced, everybody knows what we're referring to, that provides specific options, timelines, and requirements of a project is critical in making sure that all parties are moving ahead with the, the understanding of what the project's goals are, what the desired outcomes are, and the, the processes involved.
Before you go to the next slide, kind of a question for, for Mr. Jones. This is, to me, a pretty important slide because it spells out a specific process. And I guess what I'd like to understand from you, Eric, is how, how different is this from what we're currently doing? And I don't know, maybe if I'm beating you to the punch here on your next slide, I don't know, but how different is this from what we're currently doing? And if it was the will of the board to adopt the resolution and move forward with these recommendations, how much time and effort would it be to kind of fit what we've done in the past or what we are expecting to do in, in the future, regardless of these recommendations, to satisfy these recommendations?
Yes, Chair, and for others, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice. So I can speak specifically to recommendation two, and then others, if you have questions as well. So even prior to CGL's recommendations coming out, we in the county executive's office realized we needed to formulate a better structure for an oversight committee. So we actually instituted a number of months ago, a new what we call policy group committee for jail improvement conditions, not just a potential intake health services facility, but also other repairs and renovations that could happen in the main jail and other things we can do for May's compliance, but just improving jail conditions, period. And so that includes three of the deputy county executives on this policy group, as well as the undersheriff himself, county council, where we meet monthly to make sure we're, we're lifting May's consent decree things up high level and priorities. So it essentially follows this structure, as well as I can foresee better leveraging the criminal justice cabinet, which has all of the criminal justice system stakeholders. And then, of course, there's the public component, so we need to do a better job at ensuring we have a lot of public, proper public comment. We have three current avenues I would like to retool and, and to get even more public input specific to this type of project. That is the Public Safety and Justice Advisory Committee. There is also the Sheriff's Community Review Commission, and in fact, that is the commission where CGL came and presented and had public comment specific to, to this work, and also the Community Corrections Advisory Board. So those are just three bodies right there that I think we can better leverage to even get more community input in the process.
Okay, so I'm, so I guess what I'm hearing, short answer is, it wouldn't take that much, and it wouldn't be the shoe hoarding, shoehorning anything in that is completely 180 degrees different from kind of what we were thinking in the first place?
Correct.
Okay. And then in terms of item three, I don't know if there's another member of staff wants to maybe, the same kind of question relative to what we have been doing, what we thought we would be doing in terms of either contract, contracting with these various services or expecting to contract with these various services. How, how much does this deviate from kind of the path we were on as, as it relates to professional help?
Sylvester Fadail, Deputy County Executive for Admin Services, and this function falls under the Department of General Services, obviously. I believe Brian is gonna speak to some timelines relating to some of these projects because of, this is gonna entail going through the contracting services team to do an RFP and try to get a firm on board. I think the report speaks to about 18 months total, but there's gonna be a process to it. We can speak to those timelines, but obviously, it, it will take some time to be able to bring in the right firm to do this job and get all the parties involved in those conversations before we actually get into contract and try to start the process of complying with A through D as listed here.
So, Sylvester, I'm assuming then that there's really no visceral or reflexive objection to any of that, that you tend, tend to, it sounds like tend to agree that these would, contracting out these, these particular services would be a good idea?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, you also reminded me, as that conversation was happening, I wanted to mention, it, it came to mind that as you look back at the, the work that has been done and the money that has been spent in planning, I, I realize that especially this community might have concerned, did we waste our money? I, I think absolutely not. I don't think a lot of that work that was done has been lost. I think a lot of that work can still be used. The point here in, in the recommendation of a master plan is to take a lot of that work that's already been done and kind of organize it in such a way that makes moving forward more direct in terms of making decisions, making presentations, providing options and things like that. And it's also, I don't know if that, to the earlier point, we talk about contracting services to make that happen, I don't know if that's just an amendment to the current contract that you have with vendors that, you know, we stop and take a step back and go back through some of that work and organize it and present it in such a way, but that's where we were going with that recommendation.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm. Recommendation number four, require the jail planning committee to study options and provide the county board of supervisors with recommendations in ranking order. And again, in the absence of actually interviewing and speaking to the, to the other vendors that conducted the work, we don't, we're not certain if a range of options were asked for, or if there was a very specific direction to, you know, build us a facility that meets May's consent decree, but it is, it would be our recommendation from CGL and the way we'd approach the project to maybe provide a range of options for the governing body to take into consideration.
Supervisor Hume is in the queue here, and I believe you need to change your slide.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That was gonna be one of the things I was gonna say, since you're going to four, you need to bump the slide up.
Thank you.
But before we did that, and that's okay, you don't have to go back, on item number three in your recommendations in the report, it gets into a lot more detail of, of what actually you hope to accomplish with those different contracts, including in the, the space program contract would include new construction options with site selection analysis. Does that include new construction that would not be what had been contemplated before with the IHSF, SF, including potentially not at the current location?
So that is, that is in reference to if the project stops and more planning work is conducted, there's a staffing analysis, there's facility conditions assessments, you take the step back and say, we didn't, you know, maybe it's not worth doing this project at the main jail, or maybe there's space at the, whatever those options might be.
Yeah.
So the, the space programming would be a reiteration of, based on the planning work that we have now done and completed, what's the best location, site analysis, and then to reconduct the space program.
Yeah.
So we have, we, you currently have a space program based on the current project, but going back and doing the, the planning work, there may be a change of thought, maybe we need more beds, maybe we need less beds, maybe we need different type of beds, maybe this site doesn't make as much sense as we thought it did based on this planning work. So it's retooling what's been done to update based on those options. Does that make sense?
It does, but let me ask my question in a different way, so hopefully you can give me an answer. Number of beds irrespective. You said maybe this site doesn't make as much sense, and so what I'm asking is, is does this, because it looks like the bullet points in the, in the report, current facility remodel, expansion to existing facilities, new construction options with site selection analysis, sounds like that's a menu, and that you're not necessarily being pigeonholed into the previous solution that had been studied.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, that's a great way to put it, it's a menu.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's options, based on whatever work is done. Thank you for that. And, oops, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, so number four, as I mentioned, require the jail planning committee to study options and provide the county board supervisors with recommendations in ranking order. Number five, county board of supervisors to select best, best option and determine finance options. Number six, multifaceted, develop and/or modify RFPs for the following services. And again, like I just previously mentioned, these might be amendments to current contracts, vendors, whatever, this is just kind of the generic to that process. Construction project management, space, space program, staffing impact analysis, a detailed cost modeling of the options being presented, design and design compliance services, construction, and one of the services that we, we approach from CGL that often gets left out of this process is the transition and activation. Typically, we see a lot of firms do a lot of the, the planning work, the construction, and then the project's essentially done. We think there's an additional step in this process that's important, and that's the transition activation. How do you prepare people to take ownership of that building? How do you prepare staff to operate there? How do you update and develop new policies and procedures, the purchasing of equipment, all of the things that go into play in opening and activating a new facility? And then, part of the transition activation process is also looking back, if you're vacating another facility, how do we decommission, what do we do with that facility, some of the equipment and materials that are left behind, how do we essentially adjudicate that and figure out where that needs to go? So that, that is essentially it for our recommendations in the, in the presentation. So I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you for the thorough report. I know, again, we've interrupted you plenty of times, myself mostly with questions, but it's kind of the nature of the beast here, and I'm sure we'll probably have questions after we hear from members of the public. But to my colleagues, any questions of either the speaker or staff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Would you like to add a public comment?
Please.
I believe that we have some comments from the sheriff's office.
Oh, do we? Oh, okay.
Yes, Supervisor, we do have a short comment from the chair.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Chief Deputy Robles, Sacramento County Sheriff's. Unfortunately, the sheriff couldn't be here, he's down in Southern California for another meeting, but we definitely wanted to express our response to the CGL report. The sheriff's office agrees with the CGL recommendation to suspend the current IHSF project. We agree with CGL that the consent decree compliance cannot be achieved without new construction or major renovation, and that the IHSF project will not be sufficient. The sheriff's office looks forward to continue to work with all the stakeholders to design a solution which will meet the county and community's needs. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Before we hear from members of the public, do we, so if the, I think it's the third time I've heard suspend in the last 15 minutes. So a question for county council. Do we know what would likely be the disposition of plaintiff's counsel if by suspending, kind of taking a step back, absorbing the recommendations offered by CGL, to do things a little differently? That's gonna take time, some might call it additional time. Do we know whether or not there is some direct or a wink from across the room from plaintiff's counsel that that is something that would be tolerated?
Can I please confer with my attorneys that are handling this and get back to that question so that we have a specific answer for you?
Please, it's an important one because if, if we think that there is a great sensitivity to suspending things, taking a little bit more time, we need to know that, so. So while we hear from the public, you'll confer with your deputy county council folks. Supervisor Desmond?
Mr. Chair, thank you, and I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, and it just made me think of something. I mean, even, depending on, on what action we take today, even if we decide to adopt these recommendations, suspending the IHSF project doesn't mean we're suspending every effort in the county to both reduce the jail population through Framework One that had been established, I think, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Jones, that was like two years ago, I think you came up with that structure, Framework One or Framework Two. And we, we are not suspending a lot of current physical efforts we're doing in the main jail, and I think that's really important, and I hope at some point, you know, maybe after public comment, give you a chance to highlight some of those things. I, I believe you'll be coming back to the board with a more detailed report about some of those efforts as well. Is that, is that correct? efforts as well. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Supervisor Desmond, we are doing, even though this has been paused and may now, before you be suspended, which might mean paused longer, we are not suspending all of the other work we're doing around Mays consent decree, and this is from a variety of things: enacting and changing policies, improving staffing, new programming, other renovations, both at RCCC and at the main jail, working on ADA compliance, and there have been a lot of investment by the county in, again, adding staffing, we're looking at expanding the intensive outpatient and enhanced outpatient treatments, the acute psychiatric unit. So those are all just examples of a lot of things the county is working on, even while this project is suspended. And I'll also add that, yes, in mid-May, I will be coming back to you as the board, giving you an update of overall Mays consent decree compliance issues.
Okay, great, and thank you. I think it's really important that nobody be under the impression that any action we take today will mean that we pause or suspend efforts for, towards criminal justice reform in Sacramento County. Thank you.
Good points, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, can we please go to members of the public?
We have several members of the public. Susan Elfs?
And again, respectfully, please try and limit your comments to two minutes.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. In reviewing the IHSF report, a question continued to come up throughout the document. What's the most economical way for the county to achieve compliance with the Mays consent decree? Part of the MOA provided direction to create a plan for jail population reduction and diversion with strategy number one to reduce jail admissions. The Yolo County Restorative Justice Partnership, RJP, has proven to be an effective strategy for this specific purpose. The Yolo County RJP is an adult criminal diversion program that uses principles of restorative justice to resolve offenses outside of a traditional courtroom. A conference held with community panelists is designed to hold participants accountable by helping them recognize the harms caused by their conduct. Then, a collaborative solution is designed to address those harms in a way that is restorative rather than punitive. The data is proof that Yolo County RJP is making a difference. In 2023, 10.77% of felony filings were diverted to RJP. We've diverted over 250 felony cases. 81% of the enrollees graduated. A 12.8% three-year recidivism rate, down 37%. Over 90 community members have participated in the program in the past year, and for the life of RJP, over 3,163 conferences have been held with 2,822 participants graduating. Please consider Yolo County Restorative Justice Partnership as an action approach to reducing jail population and recidivism rates in Sacramento County. It's a data-led program and a reciprocal model located in your own backyard. I'll be leaving you with some information on RJP, including program description, a funding summary, additional outcome data, and contact information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three seconds to go.
Our next speaker is Barbara Ram.
And these are packets. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Barbara Ram, and I wanted to mention to Supervisor Kennedy that on February 13th of 2024, Police Chief Kathy Lester made a presentation to City Council saying that crime is actually down, including violent crime is way down. So just because we're increasing in our population doesn't mean that crime is going up. Our taxpayer dollars would be better, would better support Sacramento and its jails by following the recommendations outlined in the Sacramento County Jail Study May of 2022. Following are the recommendations to reduce jail population found on page 17 of the study. Reduce the number of jail admissions to only those posing the biggest threat to public safety. Reduce length of stay. Reduce the number of returning by placing everyone in the appropriate levels of treatment and programming. Invest in treatment, early intervention, housing, and jobs. If or when we implement the recommendations put forth by the Sacramento County Jail Study, we can immediately reduce the jail population by 600 per page 19. We could start the recommendations today. In the 170 pages of recommendation after recommendation, I couldn't find a single reference to building a $1 billion annex, and a new jail annex will lock us into an expensive bond. Let's spend millions of dollars on mental health and drug treatment, affordable housing, home of services, and youth programs. Violence prevention programs like brother-to-brother work. Let's fund it and other community programs like the Restorative Justice Partnership, just mentioned by Susan, already working in Yolo County, which are successful at reducing jail populations. I oppose expanding a system that criminalizes poverty, warehouses our neighbors, and perpetuates systemic racism. I'd like to see the county invest in community building and not jail building.
Thank you. Supervisor Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to point out that crime rates are down, which is a good thing, but crime rates are based upon per capita numbers and not necessarily numbers of occurrences. Thank you.
Dr. Karine MacIntosh-Sacco?
Chair, sir, and at a recent meeting, I heard you state you would allow speakers to introduce themselves before starting their two minutes. May I have that benefit today?
Sure.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Karine MacIntosh-Sacco. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a licensed psychologist in private practice with over 20 years of experience, providing mental health services to Sacramento County residents in a variety of settings, including correctional facilities. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, and I serve as chairperson of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. I'm also a lifelong resident of Sacramento. I represent only myself as a community mental health advocate that is a resident of District Two in making these comments. Thank you. I agree with the recommendation to suspend this project. However, I urge you to be even more dutiful and permanently cancel this project altogether. At least $1.5 million has already been spent on reports from jail design builders justifying why a jail annex should be built. Meanwhile, our county is facing devastating impacts to its Medi-Cal program and the people it serves, communities that experience significant disadvantage. I urge you to direct staff instead to focus their efforts on building out our continuum of community-based care and engaging members of the public as well as medical and mental health professionals, including the Mays court-appointed subject matter experts in the planning process. The jail does not have to be Sacramento County's largest provider of behavioral health services, and people should have better options than having to go to jail in order to receive mental health treatment. And let's be clear, the Mays consent decree was a result of the inhumane and unconstitutional treatment that plaintiffs received while experiencing incarceration at our county jails. The building being out of ADA compliance as soon as it opened its doors is just one of the many reasons the county finds itself in this situation, and in large part, this has to do with the quote "callousness, apathy, and unacceptable tolerance for human suffering" end quote, inside the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. Now, I cannot take credit for this description. It's one that was made as recent as six months ago by the plaintiff's counsel in the Mays consent decree. If the sheriff can't trust his deputies to not use excessive force in the field when responding to non-criminal mental health calls, how can he expect them to behave any differently in a $2 billion tower? Now, I submitted written public comment with statistics and references to help better inform your decision today. It is possible to satisfy the needs of the Mays consent decree with judicious stewardship of taxpayer dollars and investing in community-based care that yields a higher return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffrey Tardaglia?
Jeffrey Tardaglia, an advocate. I remember listening to 11 o'clock to 11 o'clock, you listening to the public, and the next day making the decision that has resulted in this effort here of dealing with now the annex. And you're talking about $60 million having to be set aside. Now, not for 20 years, now you're talking about 30 years. This has been a failure of the Board of Supervisors for 30 years that they've recognized the problem. It was the disability lawsuit that forced you into realizing what you're doing right now. Are you doing the correct actions for the next, you can't even count, 20 years forward? I've gotta go because I've been here since before 10 o'clock this morning that I thought this was occurring. Now, to let you know that, you know, please think of what you are doing. I give you, Mr. Desmond, that it seems that you have been doing a lot in your district for the homeless. Now, the question is dealing with how the incarceration are occurring and what is going on here. You do need better facilities. You've known that for more than a decade, and you've done nothing. Now you are here that you need to do the correct actions. Will you do that? I don't know. You've mostly been politicians, so how have you gotten out there and gotten the information and knowing what you expect that's going next 20 years are gonna be like? I remember telling before, in 2008 or 16, that you know you guys need to look with five years of hindsight back. What's the decision you need to make here that will effectively do what you need to accomplish? And you know what the decree says you need to accomplish. Is this the best way to accomplish it? It seems everything takes you too much time, and with that, I will stop and go get my eyes corrected with drops. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Michael Andrew Barnbaum?
Thank you. To iterate some points made in the presentation and to some previous speakers, I want to iterate that the jail needs major renovation but not new construction. There needs to be more invested in remodeling what you have today and not building more facilities than what is there already. To the speaker's points before, yes, use what Yolo County has done, and is, and is a good example. They've stated that in very detailed statements. To the point made by the speaker, Dr. Corinne MacIntosh-Sacco, if the motion was to cancel this project altogether, I will go on record to second that motion. This is a very sensitive matter, and it is a top topic. People are watching this as a topic of local news that matters. We need to invest more into mental health treatment at our medical centers and hospitals and not in incarceration rates. The jail population needs to be reduced. Let me give you just a personal example. My best friend is here today and is gonna speak immediately after me, and has recommended that I see a therapist because I'm going through mental health issues as a result of what happened November 5th and December 3rd. I've been diagnosed with political stress anxiety disorder because of what happened in this country on November 5th. And on a side note, I've had diagnosis of severe anxiety and mildly severe depression. And to this day, I cannot still get over what happened November 5th or December 3rd. It is very uncomforting to have a felon of the United States and mass firings of our federal workers.
Can you conclude your remarks, please, Mike?
Yes, and, and so my final thought is, investment in mental health care, I am going to Kaiser for, for this twice a month, and I'm glad I have the support of my best friend who is gonna speak to you next as a public health professional.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Flajonae Griffin-Kofer, PhD, epidemiologist.
Quite an introduction.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
May I please have the courtesy of an introduction as well?
Sure.
All right, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Flajon Kofer. I am an epidemiologist. I am also here representing the More Is Possible Coalition, which is a coalition representing tens of thousands of Sacramento County residents who want to create a vibrant, inclusive, and equitable Sacramento where everyone can thrive, feel safe, and have access to affordable housing and economic opportunity. I also, for two years, served as the technical assistance provider for Sacramento County for your Community Health Improvement Plan, which has goals that are related to the reason why we are all gathered here today. So first, I want to remind everyone here, and I think we heard that in the presentation, that this proposal is not needed to be able to meet the Mays consent decree. We do not have to expand the jail to be able to do that, and a lot of money has already been invested. And so I would like to just affirm the recommendation that we do away with this plan and actually think about investing these dollars differently. Evidence-based investments to reduce the jail population and improve staff behavior and conditions in the current structure is the best use of county staff time and financial resources. Furthermore, this proposed billion-dollar investment comes at the cost of critical needs in this county. My team, when I was running for mayor, had the privilege to directly connect with over 70,000 county residents over 18 months and ask them directly what their challenges and priorities are for Sacramento. And many of your constituents did not say to expand the jail. In fact, when I looked back, not one person said that is one of their priorities. But what they did mention was this: they talked about significantly reducing homelessness, they talked about investing in youth development, and young people said they are tired of adults leasing away their futures on proposals that they don't support. They talked about expanding mental health and substance use services, supporting small local businesses, investing in arts, public transportation and transportation savings, addressing the 4,000 students in SCOE with GPAs between 0.0 and 1.9 who are at risk of dropout. They talked about disability access and Medi-Cal reimbursement rates and service delivery, increasing the wages for SEIU 2015 home healthcare workers, beefing up emergency preparedness, and addressing climate change. So at a time when federal funding is drying up and people are facing political and economic uncertainty, we should be smart about the investments that we make in our community to make our community safer. Investing billions of dollars in an expansion of the jail is not only unnecessary, we are also unprepared to do it, as we've heard earlier today from the presentation. It's out of step with countywide sentiment, and it's an irresponsible use of our taxpayer funds. Please, let's stop wasting all of our collective time on this proposal. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Mark Maron. Unfortunately, I have a lot of experience looking at what's going on inside the jail. I've sued the jail countless times for unnecessary deaths, avoidable deaths within the facility, and as a result, have gotten access to how these things happen. And I think that you have to divert your, or you have to direct your attention to actually eliminating some of the problems at the jail as opposed to furthering the, the problems and the culture by just expanding the facility. I would think that you, if you focused on answering the questions, which your consultant has set out in, in response to question number six, looking at the functionality of the jail system to improve the, the justice system outcomes, looking at the jail population reduction efforts, implementing programs of treatment, and getting qualified staff, and I just have to say that that is paramount, getting qualified staff for law enforcement, medical, mental health, and treatment. Seven inmates have died in the jail just this last year as a result of deliberate indifference of the, of the staff to their serious and obvious medical needs, misclassification, failure to do safety checks to prevent suicides, failure to interdict the introduction of drugs, which leads to drug overdoses, and this is mostly as a result of poorly trained staff and non-performing staff. I've distributed a New York Times reprint of the Bearfield story that they wrote, which is a horrible, horrible dereliction of duty where masses of is a horrible, horrible dereliction of duty where masses of staff just stood around laughing at the desperate condition of a gentleman who died in their custody. And it was only discovered that he was dying when they had to unhandcuff him so that they could take his fingerprints, and he was crouched on the floor and dying within moments of that. It's absolutely outrageous. I realize you don't have control over the sheriff itself, but you should use whatever means you have to actually correct the conditions in that facility. Fisher you know of because you just approved a settlement, which was a gentleman who died in custody and who died of sepsis. Well, I see my time is gone. But you can step away from that, the requirements of the May's consent decree. Talk to your lawyers about getting back into court and reconfiguring that based on the actual needs that you can accomplish through alternative means other than this.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Liz Blum.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Liz Blum. I'm a co-founder of Decarcerate Sacramento, an organization that has successfully prevented jail expansion in Sacramento County for over five years now. For half a million dollars, you've been told that what we've been telling you since 2020, that the county has never seriously explored the most cost-effective options for meeting the May's consent decree. This means asking architectural experts explicitly to explore all retrofitting options to meet the legal requirements in the current jail facility. Seven people out of CGL's eight-person team have spent their entire careers in law enforcement and corrections. CGL's report incorporates arbitrary American Correctional Association standards that are completely irrelevant to the county's legal obligations and completely unrelated to the May's consent decree, which is the sole reason why the main jail annex project was proposed. This was completely outside the scope of CGL's contract and should remain completely outside the scope of the county's considerations. One of the most glaring inaccuracies in CGL's report is their attempt to address the question of if unused upper tier cells and top bunks can be used to house incarcerated people in order to prevent or reduce the need for new construction. Page 22, they don't seem to understand that no part of our analysis or any other analysis that responded to Notton Lewis's studies ever included that the general population and mental health population would be on the same floor. Court-appointed May's experts have specified a specific percentage of mental health patients that must be in lower tiers, which is less than half of the total mental health population. CGL's claim that mental health population should never be on top-tier cells is simply false and not a requirement of the May's consent decree. But perhaps misleading information like this should be expected when considering CGL interviewed more sheriff staff than any other county department. CGL contradicts themselves throughout their entire report, claiming that they think the current scope can't be reduced while stating in the same paragraph that there has been insufficient research to determine if this is the most economical choice. Leaving the next steps up to solely county staff will result in a plan that favors the Sheriff's Department preferences over the legally necessary and most cost-effective options. And signing over the project to unelected county executive is a dangerous dereliction of your responsibilities as elected officials. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Kathleen Williams.
I'm an attorney. I'm a resident in Mr. Shurna's district, and I am particularly concerned about the impact of the $2 billion that is projected to cost more than $2 billion because homelessness and jail are intertwined, those two conditions. Homelessness feeds the jail, and when you are released in the middle of the night in your paper clothes, you become homeless. We need housing and adequate dignified self-governed communities for unhoused folks who can't afford housing. We do not want this corrupt Notton Lewis recommendation to go through. They stood to benefit from that report that they produced, and the other people that stood to benefit are the legions of lawyers and banks that are going to put together this bond and make money on the interest. We want our people to be employed by the county, but we don't want a jail to be built because the correctional community sees that as a job program. These are the people, in addition to the construction industry, these are the people that will benefit. The community in Sacramento will not benefit from the jail. Jails harm communities. That is what we really feel you should take into account, diversion, other kinds of... We want community mental health. We want all the neighborhoods in Sacramento, particularly low-income neighborhoods, to have an open-door mental health facilities along with community centers for the kids. And we want to see our communities supported. We don't want to have this huge vacuum, which is taking people into the jail, killing them and destroying their lives. Jails are not a good place. Of course, we have a few or many, however many, dangerous people. Let's get them out of the community. Let's get them treatment, but do not spend our taxes on this jail.
Thank you.
My name is Alexandria Wilson. I'm here today as a resident of Sacramento County and as an organizer with Decarcerate Sacramento. Through my work with DS, I've spoken with many people inside the jail, including those who have waited weeks for necessary medications or to see doctors for acute conditions. Some have suffered irreversible harm while waiting for treatment. Many have had their concerns dismissed by both medical and custody staff. I've also reviewed expert monitoring reports on the county's compliance with the May's consent decree. These reports highlight significant obstacles to consent decree compliance, including staffing deficiencies, inadequate training for custody staff, excessive use of force, medication errors, and myriad other problems symptomatic of general mismanagement by the Sheriff's Department and a culture of indifference towards the well-being of inmates. A new facility will not solve these problems, it will merely change their address. Many inside the jail struggle with mental health challenges and are in urgent need of treatment. Incarceration and recovery are incompatible. We need to invest in community-based accessible mental health care, not more jails. Many individuals in the jail are also housing insecure or without housing, a situation that can only be exacerbated by incarceration. Rather than investing in a new jail, we need to prioritize affordable housing and support systems. Population reduction is a critical need. Despite the fact that holding someone pre-trial due to their inability to pay bail has been unconstitutional in California, 83% of the jail population is pre-trial, and that is in large part due to outrageous bail costs. Addressing the number of people held pre-trial, investing in housing resources, and investing in community-based mental health care are real, doable, and effective solutions to gaining consent decree compliance, improving public safety, and securing a better vision for the future of Sacramento. I urge you to cancel this project in its entirety and instead invest in solutions that will ensure the long-term safety and health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trevor G.
Hello, my name is Trevor Joltma. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I live in your district, Mr. Shurna. I'm here today to speak in opposition to expanding the jail. I think it's an expensive non-solution to a much larger problem. Sacramento needs more resources. Currently, if a teenager were to present in an emergency department mentally ill and in need of hospitalization, the likelihood is they would be sent out of county. We don't have enough beds, and one of the things that I heard is just the importance of beds. Locking people up isn't shown to reduce recidivism, it's not shown to reduce crime, it's not shown to make our community safer. Things like housing, food, mental health care, education, these make our community safer. So if we are planning on spending a billion, $2 billion by the end of the loan on expanding a facility that won't solve the problem, why are we not spending that on preventing the problem in the first place? Why are we not spending the money on creating a community that actually supports our citizens? If we'll spend money to feed and house people after a crime has been committed, why not before? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adriana, and I'm a resident of District 1. I'm asking you to look after me and my neighbors over the next four years. The expansion of the main jail, and frankly, the time and money spent talking about it over and over again, is not the answer. As someone working in education, I'm scared for our kids right now. I'm likely to lose my job because of federal cuts. The Trump administration is slashing funding for Medicaid, education, hunger, seniors, parks, climate resilience. They are attacking trans kids and immigrants and erasing Black and Brown people from history. As we face this, I need you, our county supervisors, to be strategic and wise. I need you to focus on how you will spend your time and your money to protect the lives of our most vulnerable Sacramento residents over the next four years. Mortgaging our future to a system that reacts to social problems instead of preventing them wasn't working in the best of times. We keep throwing money, had the wrong solutions, and being surprised when our incarceration rate and homelessness and inequality continue to grow. So I'm asking you to be wise, bold, and creative. When scared people insist that we need more jails, or whatever the next slow and expensive and regressive study or idea is, the answer is not to cage each other, it is to take care of each other. Instead of paying for jails and paying for jails and paying for a study and paying for jails, invest in cost-effective solutions that stop the cycle. Ask your staff to partner with the people in this room who have answers, who have policies who work, and ask them to partner with the people who know how to fix this problem best, which are the people who are living in it, not the people who are building jails. Please think about why you chose to run for office. Please think about what you want your legacy to be over the next four years. I'm scared, and I want to know how you will choose a better future for all of us with every dollar and minute and agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alana Marcucci-Morris.
I'd like to request my introduction not go to my time. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors, and thank you especially to Supervisor Desmond as I am a homeowner and parent in your district. My name is Alana Marcucci-Morris. I am a licensed clinical social worker at Kaiser Department of Psychiatry. I'm also the Vice President of the National Union of Healthcare Workers, where I represent over 2,500 integrated behavioral health workers of Kaiser Permanente and more than 19,000 dedicated medical professionals throughout Northern California and other states. Our dedicated healthcare workers include mental health clinicians, substance rehabilitation counselors, psychologists, nurses, nursing assistants, medical technicians, pharmacists, clerical workers, and many other caregiving medical professionals. I am here on behalf of my colleagues and industry with a very simple message. Real community safety comes from investments in healthcare, affordable housing, services, violence prevention programs, and accessible behavioral health and substance recovery treatment. Not jails that only worsen public health and safety while it lines the pockets of fewer investors and contractors. If jails work to rehabilitate and create safer communities, we would have already solved the simultaneous housing and behavioral health crisis very visible throughout Sacramento County. Expanding jails so DEI-fearing billionaires can just lock up migrants and transgender communities and communities of color and so many more only threatens the safety of the average Sacramento citizen. While you consider spending our tax dollars on facilities that re-traumatize and further deteriorate our patients suffering from illnesses, government continues to allow my employer and other profit-motivated health plans to violate mental health parity laws and deny Sacramento's people life-saving psychiatric care. If you listen to the loved ones of young people who end up in the jails you want to expand, their stories always begin with the denial of trying to access behavioral health care from their health plan. These are premium-paying patients upstream from incarceration. They're being denied, your residents are being denied the care while government allows them to continue to violate the law. This threatens our safety. If health and safety for Sacramento is your interest, this expansion will only worsen these problems. Safety can only occur when people are well and get the health care and basic services they need to live productive and healthier lives. These are less costly options to improving the health and safety. So I urge you to do the job you were elected to do by ending this expansion altogether to keep our communities and patients safe. Thank you.
Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Hello, my name is Dylan Hoy Bianchi. I'm a resident of District 1, live off of Northgate. And I just want to say that I actually agree with the CGL consultants that the most important next step is to spend more money talking to consultants. Definitely not a self-serving recommendation at all. Definitely go ahead with that. In all seriousness, I'm here to ask the Board to do the sensible thing and to reject this needless jail expansion. This whole thing is a mess, but I think it boils down to this: the county got sued and was placed under a consent decree primarily due to issues with staffing and operational policies within the jail, not due to a perceived need for a new facility. The May's consent decree was intended to require the county to treat inmates well and ensure that they're protected and their health is valued. Instead, the county has cynically warped this into a justification for a billion-dollar jail expansion, which would not actually address the main concerns brought up in May's, and instead would give a massive gift to the very same entity that was successfully sued for mistreating its inmates. If your child gets in trouble at school for treating kids badly, you set up a plan to improve your child's behavior. You don't buy the child a shiny new billion-dollar toy. Please don't move forward on this pointless jail expansion and focus instead on fixing the actual conditions that are causing inmates to suffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Camillo Carvajal.
Can we raise this a little bit? Appreciate it. Wearing the cowboy boots. Cool, thank you. I'd like to have my time to introduce myself very quickly. Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Camillo Carvajal. I'm the program and campaign coordinator for Decarcerate Sacramento, and I'm a resident of District 1. Nice to meet you, Phil. I'll start. "The crisis isn't the jail, it's a harm inflicted on people inside." I don't think this is on, is it on? Yeah, perfect. Thank you. I'll continue. "People call us from behind those walls, sharing stories of preventable deaths, medical neglect, and under-resourced mental health system leaving individuals to suffer or self-harm. According to May's consent decree, medical expert Dr. Mary Perian, every patient she interviewed was placed at an inadequate level of care, many facing immediate harm. Expanding the jail won't solve these failures, it will only reinforce them. More beds mean more suffering, not solutions. The Sheriff's Department has a documented history of ignoring court orders and delaying life-saving treatment. Simply put, you cannot build your way out of human rights violations." And let's talk about cost. $2 billion over 30 years. Supervisors, community members in this room, those who are watching online, I pose this question: what could you do with $2 billion? We could build affordable housing, fund community-based mental health programs, expand youth programs, create honest jobs, and provide violence prevention initiatives. We could choose care over cages. Do note, a new jail is not on that list, and it shouldn't be on yours. Compliance with the May's consent decree isn't about construction, it's about care. ADA HIPAA violations stem from staff behavior, not brick and mortar. We don't need a new building, we need new priorities. Reducing the jail population is the fastest and most effective solution. Nearly 83% of all people inside are on pre-trial, many held just because they can't afford bail. Expanding non-law enforcement pre-trial release, mental health diversion, and reentry programs saves taxpayer dollars, and most especially, lives. Let's emphasize that, lives. Ultimately, a jail is not needed. You have a choice: fund family separation, medical neglect, and... You have a choice: Fund family separation, medical neglect, and state violence, or invest in solutions that heal. True safety starts with community care, not cages. We don't need another study to tell us that we are right. We need action. Cancel this jail expansion, invest in people and community-based care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frances Lu.
Hi there. I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Frances Lu. I'm a resident of District One, and I work as a manager at California Department of Social Services. I have a doctoral degree in economics from UC San Diego, and I'm an organizer with Decarcerate Sacramento. I'll get started. I am here to advocate for a permanent cancellation of the main jail expansion project. I am appalled by the ongoing inhumane treatment of people in the county's jails. It has been over four years since the May's consent decree was finalized, and they deserve justice now. At Decarcerate Sacramento, we regularly receive reports about people inside, about medical neglect and maltreatment, including not receiving prescribed medication, not receiving timely and appropriate treatment after injuries, inability to access mental health services, and having requests for basic needs ignored repeatedly. A new jail building will not solve any of these issues. Many of these issues can be solved by the proper enforcement of existing policies and hiring qualified county staff. Instead of prioritizing the recommendations of an overpaid consulting companies, the Board should be listening to the people inside of the jails, and you are responsible for their care, and you are failing them. Instead of relying on a new building to solve all of the problems in our jail system, the Board should be focused on policies that reduce the existing jail populations such as diversion programs and reforming the county's unconstitutional cash bail system. Instead of promising $2 billion to construction companies, architectural firms, and banks, the county should prioritize funding programs and services that actually improve health and safety of the communities that they serve. Please listen to your constituents and vote to cancel the main jail expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney Manson.
Hi, good afternoon, Board. Courtney Hanson, I have thought about and advocated on behalf of those languishing inside our jails every single day since I saw the inside of that building in 2011 and experienced directly the quote "unacceptable tolerance for human suffering." That's a quote from the attorneys enforcing the May's consent decree, and that is what is exhibited by our Sheriff's Department routinely. What had such an impact on me was not the outdated building, but the sadistic behavior of the guards who treat people in their custody as less than human, as not worthy of dignity, sometimes not worthy of even living another day. How to comply with the legal mandates of the May's consent decree remains the core issue today, so let's focus our attention on the plaintiffs, those incarcerated in our jails, and the attorneys who represent them. I've submitted to the clerks some copies of letters from plaintiffs' counsel demanding that the county invest in community-based mental health beds, reduce the jail population, and hold jail staff accountable for policies and practices that are hurting and killing people. I know you've probably seen these, and I'm not trying to insult your intelligence, but there are so many moving parts to keep in mind for a comprehensive and informed conversation today. I recently had the privilege of negotiating a consent decree on behalf of currently and formerly incarcerated women in the federal prison system. Consent decrees last a few years, but they do not last forever. The legacy of your budget decisions and moral integrity will extend far beyond the timeline of this particular lawsuit. And last I read, the county was in partial compliance with over 33% and substantial compliance with over 65%. That's progress on 98% of the consent decree without a new jail building. The resolution you're being asked to vote on, this part's important, delegates the next steps to the county executive, and I urge you as the Board of Supervisors to take a proactive role in ensuring that the people you represent change the language of this document that you're being asked to vote on today to make sure that a county executive does not take the next steps behind the scenes. You know how much the community cares about this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Bobby Rayne Clark. Okay. Andrew Bianchi.
Hello, my name is Andrew Bianchi. I'm an organizer with Decarcerate Sacramento and a resident of District One. Members of this Board, you have a duty to the people in this county, and especially to those communities who desperately need to be invested in. This is an opportunity to think critically about what you would be committing to and what future you would be creating by expanding a jail that has been killing people for years. People aren't dying because the building is too small. People are dying, I suspect, in part because the Board sees the folks inside the jail as less than human, the same way our sheriff does. I would caution you against making decisions because they seem easy in this moment. So many of the problems we face are the result of people avoiding difficult conversations and avoiding dealing with the cognitive dissonance that comes along with choosing policies that benefit the few while stomping down on the humanity of the whole. Empowering the Sheriff's Office to keep killing members of the community they are supposed to protect, but insisting that these structures of oppression have to exist for public safety certainly must be powerful dissonance to try and think your way around. This Board's understanding of safety being the equivalent of investing in an ever-expanding carceral system is a myth. It's a narrative. Who is really kept safe in this narrative? Certainly not the people inside the jail, whose safety or lack thereof is a clear statement of how uncaring this county is and of how the idea of safety is only true as far as people have convinced themselves for the people who call 911 and feel that they were rescued. Should we not measure the success of law enforcement officers by how they treat the most vulnerable, those who are struggling the most? This current narrative of safety is illusory. It is neither legitimate nor tangible. The existence of jails both incentivizes and ensures their continued use. We will never move in a different direction unless we understand that jails themselves necessitate their own existence. Please vote against any form of jail expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Skylee.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Skylee. I'm a family medicine and addiction physician and an HIV specialist, and I work with people who are incarcerated, and I live in District One. I have been to the, and these reads are my own. I've been to these meetings in the past, and I'm always surprised and shocked, honestly, that this is called a mental health facility or a health intake facility, because it clearly is a jail. And I am surprised that we think that a new building will help improve the health of those incarcerated as well as the health of our community, because every day I witness the harms of incarceration on both individuals and our communities. Patients must choose between their humanity and their health. I have patients who miss their visits with their oncologists or with their cancer radiation treatment, not because they don't want treatment for their cancer or they don't care about it, but because they need to prioritize and are trying to preserve their dignity. Now whether that's prioritizing family visitation, or it's due to poor treatment by certain custody officers, or the stigma of having to enter through a separate entrance of public buildings or remaining in chains while hospitalized. Prior to AB 732, which mandated standard of care for reproductive health in California jails and prisons, I took care of patients in labor who were chained to the bed. I can see how depression and anxiety are worsened by incarceration and how it causes PTSD. Some people start using illicit substances to help cope with their incarceration, and without treatment for opiate use disorder, the risk of overdose deaths for people who are released from incarceration versus those who have not been incarcerated is anywhere from 40 to 100 times higher, depending on which study you read. People also experience homelessness, are more likely to be incarcerated, and similarly, people who are incarcerated are more likely to experience homelessness. So it's blatantly clear to me that incarceration only worsens the health of individuals and our community members. These programs that are beneficial on the inside are ones that share, that show care and dignity for people's humanity, not because it's in a fancy building. Imagine what we would look like if we could do that in our communities before people make mistakes, before we decide we no longer want to look at human suffering when we drive under bridges around the streets. A gilded cage is still a cage, and over 80% of people in the SAC jail are pre-trial. Why aren't we working to reduce overcrowding of the jail? Why aren't we investing in communities? There's a better way, and I'm asking the Board to be brave enough to choose it.
Thank you.
Alan Ash.
Hello, I'm Alan Ash, speaking today for myself as a recovering attorney and as a resident of District Three. I'm joining the other community members, asking you to end this jail expansion plan for good today, but I also wanted you to be aware that the CGL report that's in the packet is not the independent third-party review of the jail expansion we were promised. According to public records requests I filed, CGL's actual independent third-party review was delivered to the county last September 13th. All the changes county staff got in the CGL report since last September have only made it not independent and not third-party. The county has not released that September report, calling it a draft report, but the draft exemption in the Public Records Act is supposed to protect intra-governmental communication, not an independent third-party report that costs taxpayers over half a million dollars. Before approving anything, you as supervisors should have access to that original report, and the community should be able to see it as well. What's particularly suspicious about the changes made to the CGL report since last September is the response I got from the sheriff to my public records request. I asked for all communication between CGL and the Sheriff's Office, and even records showing communication between CGL and the Sheriff's Office, and the sheriff claims no such records exist, even though the county records and even the report that was presented today show CGL had a lot of communication with the sheriff. That means the Sheriff's Office is either hiding something that they told CGL or just doesn't believe the sheriff has to comply with Public Records Act requests. Either option shows a serious problem with the transparency of the supposed independent process, as well as the continuing need in Sacramento County for stronger sheriff oversight. So please, stop the jail expansion plan today, but also release the September CGL report to give us the independent third-party review we were promised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Golis Saba.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Golis Saba. I'm a family physician, and I've been a resident of District One for over 30 years. Also, I've worked as a family physician in the two SAC County jails for 11 years, ending in 2021. I'll make this short and simple. During my time there, we helped so many folks detoxify safely from drugs and alcohol. In reviewing their charts, I would notice so often that these people would have five to eight incarcerations per year for the same issues, substance-related problems. Substance treatment programs could have helped these folks come out of this repeated cycles of incarceration, but were inadequate or realistically nonexistent in our community. So based on my long experience working in main jail and RCCC, we need an expansion of drug treatment, mental health treatment programs, affordable housing, and job training, education, and jobs. This would vastly reduce the jail population and eliminate the need for expansion of the jail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keon Bliss.
I'd like the time to actually introduce myself as well. My name is Keon Bliss. I'm a member of Decarcerate Sacramento and a longtime community organizer, and I'm here to advocate for not only the suspension of this jail expansion project, but really a reallocation of the funds that you're trying to pursue into community-based needs and ending this boondoggle entirely. I don't specialize as much in stories as much as I do data and analysis, and just to note for anyone who wants to know about county crime rates among 1.5 million people in the population, in 2023, there were a total of 10,431 crimes reported to Sacramento Sheriff. That's an overall crime rate of about 1,700 per 10,000 for all offenses, or 0.01% of the entire population. And that includes 46 violent crimes per 10,000 people, or 0.003% among the 1.5 million people. Do you know how much, how many of those crimes actually resulted in arrest by the Sacramento Sheriff? 14%, just in 2023. And that's 32% for violent crimes, which is actually lower than the state average, and 8% for property crimes. And that's the same year that the sheriff's budget actually exceeded $925 million from discretionary and restricted revenue sources. For all of that money that you could be spent, like that you're looking to put into a jail system and to building a new jail, you could actually be putting it into so many of the different community programs that have already been described to you by all these other speakers. In fact, you could actually, you could also address the 40% staff vacancies that were reported last year among the Behavioral Health Services Department, such as behavioral health peer specialists, mental health workers, social workers, EMTs, and health educators, and paramedics, which even for just 2% of the billion-dollar bond that some of you approved in 2022 or pursued of, you could hire them at a parity of the minimum salary range for a deputy sheriff's officer, which was at $89,000. That amounts to about 223 behavioral health staff of any equivalent combination of those numbers that I cited to you. So rather than continuing to like allow staff to come back to you year after year after year, asking for more, like asking to build either an intake facility or a new jail entirely, how about you actually address some of the, like the actual critical community needs that actually, like that directly impact people and not just throwing people into cages, out of your sight?
Thank you.
Cesar Aguirre.
I'd like some time to introduce myself too, please. Thank you.
Just, I'm gonna interrupt. There's no need for you to premise the request. We're gonna give it to you. Just go ahead and introduce yourself. I've got control of the clock, so we're gonna, we're gonna make sure everyone has the time they want to introduce themselves, their title, their position, their, so until you start the substance of your testimony, the clock will not run.
Thanks for that clarification. My name is Cesar Aguirre. I am a lifelong resident of Sacramento here and a very recently formerly incarcerated individual. It has just passed a year since I was at our county jail, and we've heard a lot about what it's like for people in there, so I'd like to give you my account, and also just state that I am very firmly opposed to the expansion of the jail and hope that you will, as soon as you can deem fit, decide not to continue with this project. My time in the jail a year ago was both detrimental to my physical and mental health. It was extremely stressful, seeing lots of violence being inflicted upon not just myself but other inmates from before I was even in a cell. And I suffered both losing about 8% of my body weight and a concussion, which resulted in staples in my head in an emergency room visit. I was also attacked not only by guards, but also another inmate who I was placed with, who had, as I was informed by other inmates, recently attacked a different inmate before they were placed with me. So that's, again, a decision made at the sheriff level, where they decide who they place people with. And it's that disregard for safety that I felt while I was in there. I, prior to suffering a concussion, requested not to be put in isolation and in solitary confinement, and that was exactly what I got when I refused to. And it's, it just, it shines through so clearly to me from my experience in there that there isn't a regard for well-being that's not the priority in there. It seems like the well-being of the people in that building are just, isn't, isn't a priority for the sheriff's institution, and to give them an entire new facility as if, you know, these experiences aren't happening? I mean, I was in fear of being one of the number of people who have died in there, and I just urge you to reallocate that money to services where there are professionals who are trained to provide care, to rehabilitate, and not have people continue to be harmed by their time in jail. Thank you.
Morgan Murphy.
Oh, thank you. Hello, my name is Morgan Murphy, and my pronouns are she/her. As a registered nurse in Sacramento- As a registered nurse in Sacramento and someone who cares deeply about public health and safety, I'm urging the city of Sacramento to halt its consideration, or the county of Sacramento, to halt its consideration of the prison expansion. I support the recommendations of Decarcerate Sacramento. You can't get well in a cell. It is pertinent that we put our efforts towards decreasing the population of our community who are currently incarcerated, especially considering that our city is unable to support the health needs of its current incarcerated population, as they must wait at least three months to be able to even access mental health services. Please do away with this expansion project entirely and support and fund resources that promote the long-term health and safety of our community instead. And going forward, please consider the voices of the healthcare professionals and advocates in this room about how to actually meet the May's consent decree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teddy Georgoff?
My name is Teddy Georgoff. As a quick background, I was interviewed by CGL and asked to share the research I had collected the year prior around Nocton Lewis IHSF Plan. I've spoken to three of you one-on-one about that research. I've shared my findings with Eric Jones, DGS, and others, and I think it's fair to say that I've been acutely involved in this process. So given that I have very little time, there's just two things I want to convey. First is that although I have issues with some of the subjective conclusions of CGL's report, I am agreeing fully with the recommended next steps. Suspending the projects, creating a committee, and doing comprehensive analysis of all these solutions available makes the most sense. Since the beginning, we had had an architect firm do the first analysis. We were always a bit stuck in the mentality of building something. This is an inevitable conclusion if you're an architect firm, but stepping back from this will be beneficial to the county. To address your concern over a pause, Supervisor Serna, quarter-over-quarter, we have seen progress towards May's compliance. Last quarterly report showed only seven provisions out of the 350-plus were classified as non-compliant, so we have substantial or partial compliance of over 97% of the demands. My point being here that no federal judge would determine that our county has not been showing progress towards May's compliance, so we have time and we should use it to make the best choice. My second point goes back to the question of fiscal buckets, which again, Supervisor Serna, you kind of hinted at earlier. Appreciate your line of questioning today. I think it was effective. Is it legally required or a choice? Just as an example, in the report, CGL said that the upper-tier cells and top bunks could only be used on a limited basis because it does not take into account industry-best practices. Okay, we are here to address May's compliance, not some accreditation agency, right? We can use upper tiers because May's allows it, and the county did an analysis of the percent of population that needs lower tiers due to disabilities and a significantly less than half of each segregated population. Do not let that be a reason we need more beds. I believe that going forward with the suspension will give the committees that we are going to make time to plan and save significant funds for our county, allowing us to spend those dollars on the things we all want to see in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alyssa Lee?
Hello, my name is Alyssa Lee. I live in Supervisor Serna's district, in District One. I'm a state employee, and I echo all the comments before. I really urge the board to cancel this jail expansion project. As Adrian and Dr. Flo said, it's not just the money, it's the time, it's the community's time. I think you've heard very well-reasoned research, rational explanations as to why this is not only a waste of money, a waste of time, a waste of energy, but is really showing a perversion of our priorities if we go forward with it. And I'm really worried that this meeting's gonna end and we're gonna keep talking about this jail expansion and that you're not really listening because it doesn't feel like this affects you. Like, this affects every single resident. And it's not just the price tag. The price tag is outrageous, but let's say the price tag seemed reasonable. The idea of can't get well in a cell is that the very act of putting someone behind bars and separating them from their community is not a condition that allows for people to heal or get better or become a better person. I had a loved one incarcerated in the jail recently, and to not be able to know if they were alive when we were cut off from them, the few times I got to visit them in person, to not be able to hold their hand, to know that how, whether they got a blanket dependent on if the guard on duty liked them or not, to not have access to letters that we had sent them. This is, mental health issues are not just about, you know, what pre-diagnoses did they have going into jail. The very condition of isolating people and cutting them off and creating an environment where they don't know what's going to happen to them at any moment or have no control over what goes on is what creates the challenges and is how they feed into the cycle of homelessness, of poverty, of unwellness. So there is no reason to consider this jail expansion. I really hope you listen to people here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get it up a little bit? Yeah. Just a little bit. Right? All right. PJ He-Him, lifelong resident of Sacramento. In the report, the conclusion states, "While answering these questions, it became apparent that a larger overarching question remained. What is the most economical way for the county of Sacramento to achieve compliance with the May's consent decree? That was literally the entire point, to address the elements of the consent decree that could be met prior to ever discussing spending $2 billion on a new location." And that wasn't looked at? I'm here to voice my opposition to a new jail. When many of those being held are folks who have minor violations, many held who have failure to appear for unpaid fines due to being unhoused, all of this money would be much better spent to address those issues and support. Build housing and your jail population will go down. Don't punish poor folks who can't pay bail by insisting they stay in jail due to their lack of monetary support. Rich people who can pay bail aren't inherently safe or do their access to money, yet we treat them like they are. And all the while, poor folks barely subsisting, being removed from their neighborhoods for weeks or months while their trial process goes on, can utterly destroy their lives, even if they are then found innocent. The reality is that we need to move towards restorative justice and actual rehabilitation and a way for incarceration. All incarceration does is move people towards more unstable ways of existing, resulting in them being more likely to offend in the future, not less. It's been shown time and again that when folks receive community support, they are less likely to offend initially because their needs are met, and it also makes them less likely to reoffend if our system has already pushed them towards the jail pipeline. I need you to understand the circular logic of the path of incarceration. Historically disenfranchised and discriminated populations have supported, have support removed from them through redlining, no GI bill money, et cetera. Some then, out of desperation, turn to crime to survive, to meet their and their family's basic needs. They are then jailed. Jails expand, and more support is removed from these communities. Then more offend and are jailed, and then jails need to expand again. You're heading down the wrong path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Les Light?
Yeah, I'm a volunteer organizer with the Tenants Union in District Five. So again, we're, you're taking this appalling approach to addressing, I guess, the May's consent decree. So I'm gonna rehash what I said first time around. So we're grownups here, we should be grownups. You say you want to spend more money on policing, jail expansion, because, well, it's become a little foggy here now, but I guess at the back of it is some concern with violent crime. But if we're grownups, we know where crime and violent crime comes from, but we don't talk about that. It is born of a maliciously generated poverty in a community characterized by cruel inequality. The proposed jail expansion is inflicted here as a containment for anticipated acceleration of mental illness and addictions resulting from the continued malicious failure of our municipality and county's policy and administration of housing. In Sacramento, policy of housing, like everything else, is a consequence of control and domination by scale, real estate, and property development interests and corporate rental interests. You talk about criminals with blood on their hands, but if we're honest about blood on hands, theirs is the bloodiest. If you have any role to protect the interest in physical safety of the more general population, for this interest, you must fail. You have been selected and your career is cultivated by these controlling interests as failure. You are examples for them and how their ideology that government must fail, and that puts blood on your own willing and bloody and failing hands. Now, glad to see the DA and his dog and pony show aren't here this time. I think we've made some progress.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
I think you know, you know my point of view on this, and I think I made it clear, so I'm happy to conclude.
Thank you.
Lauren Nguyen? Rachel Harrington?
I urge you to halt the expansion. An additional jail building would not solve the May's consent decree. Most of the decree issues are about jail staff behavior. Improving those conditions is not about a building. It's about reducing staff-patient ratios and enforcing current policies within the jail for all jail staff. Even with a new building, the county will still need to reduce the jail population and continue to retrofit the current building to meet the consent decree. The board should prioritize meeting the lawsuit without a new building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernie Singh?
My name is Bernie Singh Rogers, and I'm a fellow with Legal Services for Prisoners with Children and a Sacramento Chapter member with All of Us or None. As a member of the Sacramento community, I stand in opposition to the proposed expansion of the county jail. I believe we should not allocate $2 billion to this project, but instead, these funds would be better spent on addressing the root causes of incarceration, like the need for mental health resources, housing programs, youth programs, and alternatives to incarceration. Our county jail currently has a long waitlist for mental health services, numerous tragic deaths, and a crisis of mass incarceration. Rather than expanding the jail, we should focus on improving the conditions of the existing facility, so I firmly oppose funding this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Menard?
I'm just gonna play a testimony from somebody currently in the jail.
While he's working on the technology, I have advised the clerk to request that the individual state that he has permission to do so from the person that was recorded, and as of right now, I don't have that, so.
I do have expressed consent from the person in this recording to play this.
Satisfy County Council?
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna hold the testimony, even though it's remote to the same two-minute limit that we're keeping everyone else at. How about this? Why don't you have a seat, and we'll let the next person come, and hopefully you can resolve it, and we'll call you back after the speaker.
Can you just add them back on for me? So we'll do our LR Roberts?
Hi, guys. In Oak Park, I, LR Roberts, ran Los Obelos Legal Services for many years. My non-attorney services were to get SSI and other benefits for disabled people. So regarding jail population reduction, a new building wouldn't fix these problems. I've attempted to get a developmentally-disabled man assessed, and a deputy told me that the person was not disabled. I've had clients have SSI's hearings scheduled, and if they got on SSI, more money would come into our county, and they would not release the person to go to their SSI hearings. I've asked to talk to the social worker when I was at RCCC, and the deputy at the desk told me that there wasn't a social worker. I had just gotten off the phone with the social worker, and the deputy later admitted she said that to get me to stop standing near the desk. A mentally disabled client was put in the general population, which they promised they wouldn't do. The resultant blood stayed on my client during a meeting with his wife later, and during his hearing later, the same blood was on him. This was in the days before effective AIDS treatment. Oh, and the original guy that I was trying to get developmentally-disabled assessed eventually died of AIDS. People aren't getting their medications in a timely manner. You've heard, three weeks, that sounds what my experience was. The jail does not refer clients to, so there's a form you're supposed to fill out when you've had somebody in a hospital or in any other institution, and there's a form that if you think they're eligible for Social Security benefits, that you're supposed to give to Social Security, so as soon as they get out of the jail or the hospital, they're supposed to be referred immediately for disability, and they're not doing it. In fact, the sheriff that I talked to at the time, and I've been here through several sheriffs, had never heard of the form. So a way to get more funds into our community is to have people get on disability, and we should be helping with that instead of going the opposite way.
Thank you. Does, hold on.
Can we add it, Mr. Menard, to the end, or do you want to bring him back now?
Well, let me check, let me just do a check-in. Did you resolve the, why don't you go ahead and come on up then? And again, hopefully, the testimony, albeit remote, is within the two minutes.
And I've been at Sacramento County Jail for the past six months. I've been in disciplinary confinement and isolation since the day I got here, and I'm not on discipline. They treat us like slaves in here in order for us to get dayroom or cosmo. We have to clean cells. We have to clean rooms that people move out of, same, some of them BEOP, and it's real nasty with DC that piss everywhere. And the police saying for us to have us engaged with other inmates possibly starting are consequence of their behavior. Due to their behavior, we get prosecuted because they're not acting right. So we have 20 cells in this pod, and they only have one shower working when they're supposed to have two working. And the bottom shower is just filled with DC that urine and throw up in it, and they won't clean it. And the trustees pick and choose what they want to clean, and we have to pick up their slack during dayroom, so we have like minimum time to do what we need to on our dayroom time. It's just, it's just really scandalous how they treat us in here and how we have to live in order to get what our necessities are, you know? That's just one of my main concerns, the way they treat us and how they sanitize the cells before somebody moves in it, and how we have to get treated like we're the trustees or the porters, and they're not even doing their job right. It's just hectic in here. By law, you're not supposed to even be in the disciplinary pod unless you're on discipline, and I've been in this pod for like six months, and I have not gotten a lineup at all. At first, I thought it was because I was transgender, but there's transgenders in other pods, and they just let, they just have me in here by myself, like. My name is.
That was it?
Great. Thank you.
AJ Albano.
My name is AJ Albano. I'm a volunteer at Decarcerate Sacramento and a resident of District One. I'm grateful for this active, engaged community and for the values shared by those who have spoken and who will speak today. What I hope is not lost on this board is that our individual values don't compel us to be here today. We are here because of Lorenzo Mays, Ricky Richardson, Jennifer Bethune, Armani Lee, Lertie Spears, and Cody Garland. They expose inhumane conditions within the Sacramento County jails and set this county on path to signing the May's consent decree, which holds the county accountable for the health and safety of incarcerated individuals then and now. Yet, six years after it was signed, we are discussing a $2 billion jail expansion. Worse, we are being told that in order to comply with the May's consent decree, population growth should be expected and planned for. This undermines the county's own commitment to jail population reduction in order to meet May's requirement. The decree cannot support both jail population reduction and construction for population growth. The May's remedial plan clearly references only one of those goals, Provision B. Reduction in jail population is a cost-effective means to achieve constitutional and statutory standards. Construction for a growing jail population does not appear explicitly or implicitly in suggesting otherwise misrepresents the decree's intent. The county should be familiar with the consequences of misrepresenting illegal intent. In 2021, the California Supreme Court ruled that conditioning pretrial release on whether someone could afford bail was unconstitutional. To indicate its intent, the Supreme Court stated liberty is the norm, and detention prior to trial without a trial is the carefully limited exception. Yet, our judiciary has misused its decision to justify revoking bail for individuals and continuing the practice of trapping people in pretrial detention. Eighty-three percent of the Sacramento jail population is pretrial, 90% of whom have serious mental illness. It is time for the county to operate with integrity and honor its legal obligations, especially when it comes to the health and safety and constitutional rights of its residents. This expansion project should be canceled. And finally, it is imperative for any future committees this board approves not only include but center the voices of incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals. It was incarcerated people who exposed the problems, and they can guide us to the solutions.
Thank you.
Jessa Rego.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessa Rego. I live in Folsom in District Four, and I'm here in support of Decarcerate Sacramento against the jail expansion construction. And I basically would like to second everything that everyone else has said in opposition to this. And through Decarcerate Sacramento... Excuse me. With the permission of Tiffany Richards, they have given me this testimony that she would like shared, and I really feel like they're but for the grace of God go I or any of my friends and family.
So my name is Tiffany Richards, and I am an inmate at Sacramento County.
Wait, excuse me. Can you pause that?
Sorry?
Is this an inmate?
Yes.
Okay. We need the same...
She did.
Oh, she did? Okay, all right.
Great. We appreciate that care is being given for consent.
Okay.
So my name is Tiffany Richards, and I am an inmate at Sacramento County. Officers don't... They don't find time to address the things that inmates need. We have, like, we're not... If you're in the food, you have inmates... You don't have the beverage cans. People are in love, eating, and they're paying us, and being denied. Officers act like doctors, nurses, so they don't have better food. Hate work. I'll witness that. Inmates... Oh, rat feces and urine in food.
So I don't know if the sound quality is very good, but she just mentioned rat feces and urine in the food.
Inmates prefer to hurt inmates. I've seen it with my own eyes. Officers... What are you... Fuck. Officers... Inmates... New feeds and tights are not given or asked for. No cleaning supplies, denied people phone calls. Officers lie to inmates to get them in trouble. Inmates go to the hole for no reason.
Yeah, with the sound quality, I'm not sure how much of this is making it through, but she's mentioning officers lying to get inmates in trouble, being denied phone calls, going into the hole for no reason.
They have speed papers. No officers, not enough things. They're insane because they aren't heard. They can be ungraced or use the restroom. I'm not saying all go, officers, but to this...
So I'll wrap up my time, but I encourage the supervisors to talk to Decarcerate Sacramento with extra time. There's a lot of these stories. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just nervous. My name is Terri Sharp. I'm a community member, formerly incarcerated. I volunteer with Decarcerate Sacramento. I'm on the CWRT Committee Advisory Board. I volunteer with the church on Wednesdays to give out food to the homeless. I highlight those things as my introduction to show the potential of somebody that's in the jail building right now. So the problem I had today was with the time limit. There's a whole bunch I could talk about today, but I'm going to try to narrow it down specifically to two things. We speak about allocating funds to different resources, like mental health diversion. Now, the experience I had in the jail gave me the relevant experience to come out here and speak about the things in the jail. Now that I'm in the mental health diversion program, receiving services from El Hogar and programs like CORE, I can speak to that reality. And I could tell you, there's not enough funding for anything, right? Right now, my house is in jeopardy, and I have been the most proactive I can be and I've ever been in my life. These type of things, I've never been involved in. I never trusted government. I'm not speaking alone. Any of you guys, it's just my perspective from where I'm from and the things I've experienced. But yeah, there's not enough money going to these programs, and oftentimes, I have so many objectives that exceed their expectations of myself, so they discourage me, and they want me to minimize myself, and I won't allow that to happen. On top of that, I take into account the fact that a lot of people aren't in the same space as me and what it took for me to get to the space where I wanted to be a productive member of society, despite all the things that I've been through and the challenges that these people face. It's almost impossible to address with the resources that are available with these programs that they're being designated to with the mental health diversion program. I also want to talk about the jail population and steer the attention, since we're taking a focus off of building a jail, steer the attention to the low-quality arrests and the malicious prosecutions that occur in that jail. Right now, I can identify three problems in anybody's case that are constant, no matter how many times I pick up that jail call, as I am a jail support advocate for the people in there. I got six people that I'm helping with their cases, providing participatory defense. And number one, A59B, you have a right to a speedy preliminary. The district attorney has found a way to alter the court schedule to violate that right, right? So you have to be provided a speedy preliminary within 10 to 60 days. I didn't get a preliminary hearing for eight months, right? The public defender's office does terrible. It took me three attorneys to file motions. By the time I got that third attorney, I had six motions that I should say were granted on my behalf. All of these people face these problems. They play stalemate with people when you have a right to face your accuser, and that accuser no longer wants to cooperate with the district attorney. They stalemate you until they coerce you into making a decision to take a plea deal. I appreciate you guys' time. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello. As a resident of Sacramento County, as a spouse, a daughter, a sister, with many aunts and uncles, and the aunt of 12 nieces and nephews, I strongly urge you to oppose this project and jail expansion. I urge you to consider how we invest resources in our people's well-being and our public health and our families' public health. Ask yourself if you are doing the correct action to deal with the court issues of your very own constituents, such as their mental health, their housing, resources, and investing in necessary public resources. Please ask yourself this over and over, because that's what you're here to do, to decide on. These are the questions that you cannot forget, despite hearing how beneficial and purty a new jail annex sounds. As it was mentioned earlier, there were seven deaths in our jails last year. That is not acceptable. It is not acceptable that this board invests county resources into the deaths of the incarcerated rather than investing in our families. I know that's a broad statement, but it's better to invest in the better jail conditions, or just better yet, to reduce the jail population. Or what is the alternative? That we continue on the same path and circle, leading to the incarceration of our family members, and investing our money into horrible conditions that lead to death, all while a jail annex is being built? That is not acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us today. My name is Simon Hyatt, resident of District One, also elected member representative of the California Working Families Party here in Sacramento. I'm here to oppose any expansion of the jail. And, you know, it was really powerful to hear the testimonies, especially coming from those that are inside across the street right now. I think we should all center ourselves on the suffering that exists in our city and the suffering that exists in that building. Jim Crow lives in Sacramento. Jim Crow is alive today. Legacy of the history of this country, the ending of slavery and moving into segregation, from segregation to the Jim Crow era, and now the new Jim Crow, where we isolate our poorest, our people of color. We don't provide them with economic security. We don't provide them with education, and we house them in facilities like this. And we're here to talk about potentially expanding a facility with such suffering, at the same time, spending $2 billion that we don't have of spending $2 billion of people's money that are not yet born. We didn't ask for this system, but we're here with it today, and we want to see a new world. Excuse me. We want to see a world where we care for each other as a community and a world where violence and suffering is not the thing that we perpetuate, especially in our community level. One last thing, as far as that money goes, it's time that we take a stand as local municipalities and at the county level. We're losing everything at our federal level. The world is changing very rapidly, and we need to find ways that we can be resilient as a community here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, board. My name is Mac. My pronouns are they/them, and it is good to see you. I know it has been a while. I'm a community organizer, artist, abolitionist, anti-fascist. I'm a parent. I could go on, but just in general, I'm a person who cares, lives, and creates here in Sacramento. No offense, but it sucks that we started this conversation with we don't want to hear about standards because they're higher than the bare minimum of what's required. But I guess the silver lining is that we also began with this current plan falls short across the board in compliance standards and what's required. I think next, I want to name that crime does not just increase with population. It increases as wealth disparities get bigger and folks don't have access to choice, opportunity, good jobs, mental health, substance use services, public housing, and all of the real solutions to crime rates that a few billion dollars could be better spent on. We know it's at least two, but after hearing today that not all costs were included, let alone it was unclear if less costly measures were even looked at, we know that it's higher. I'm glad to see that the recommendation says suspend this project and telling you the things that this community has been telling you to do since we started talking about this in 2019. Not just cancel this plan and invest in proven crime preventions, but build a collaborative space to have a conversation about jail population reduction and the entire cops, courts, and cages system that doesn't only have county staff in hell bent on construction. It needs to have community experts and stakeholders that are in this room, living in the jail, and those who have the intersection and connections, you know, like their family. All of our money in our county budget goes to cops, courts, and cages, and then we wonder why our jail is full of unhoused people. People struggling with mental health, folks with addictions, folks who are black, brown, poor. Your lack of investment in your community is showing, and it's never too late to start to do the right things. And I know you've been trying, but five years later, and saying the same things over and over again to you just to still be in the same position is crazy. The only way to stop doing the same thing over and over again without getting any different results is to introduce a new quality. And in this case, it's stop trying to build your way out of this crisis and collaborate with this community to build the world that we all know is possible. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you.
My name is Joy. I am a disabled veteran and resident in District One. I am going to play a recording today. We do have the express consent from Shaney Phillips to play this recording in four parts, so there are four of us who will be playing. Thank you.
My name is Shaney Phillips, and I'm 46 years old. I'm reading the statements from the seventh floor of the Sacramento County Main Jail Facility, specifically the 400 par or the maximum security unit for women. I'm two months into a six-month sentence for assault with a deadly weapon. I'd like to give my saying that I've spent my fair share of time incarcerated. I've been locked in Sacramento, Los Angeles, El Dorado, and Yolo Counties. I suppose that technically I'm a criminal, but my main problems are drugs and mental health. If I didn't have those problems, I wouldn't get arrested. I understand that the police and the county have a big job to do, and that is not easy, but many things need to change. The focus of the jail system from the time of arrest through release and probation and incarceration for the maximum length of time possible and reincarceration whenever possible, leading to an astounding recidivism rate. Never under any circumstances is rehabilitation considered. We need rehabilitation, not reincarceration. Programs like Mental Health Court and Drug Court are on the right track, but they don't do enough. I successfully completed Mental Health Court last year. I went from jail to rehab, and during my stay, received my similar check, which I used to pay for school and became a drug and alcohol counselor for my kids' health. The stress became too much for me, and I had a mental health and addiction relapse, and now I'm back here. Incarceration is not the answer for people like me. I am schizophrenic, actually, psychoactive, because I'm also diagnosed with depression and an anxiety disorder. I need mental health treatment, including case management services for long-term success. Unfortunately, I'm practically homeless with no family, so when I'm released from jail, I have a catch-me-if-you-can relationship with probation, which is really out of necessity, not choice. Being incarcerated is the only opportunity I have to get help, and it's just not available here. There is no therapy whatsoever, and reentry services are lawful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Schnicker?
Yep. Schnicker. Looks worse than it is. I live in District One in Supervisor Serna District and own a home. Of course, we all pay taxes every time we buy a burrito or something, so here we are. We're the public here. I'm also here as I'm a full-time caregiver for my partner with late-stage Parkinson's, and I'm talking about 24 hours because we have a terrible mental health system and healthcare system. That's why I'm a caregiver for ungodly hours. Okay? I'm also the payee and supporter of my brother with a serious mental illness who is doing well now, thanks to mom, who was his support for 50 years. So as his example with my brother, who has been hospitalized, locked up with psychosis, the reason he's doing so well the last 20 years, living independently, is food, a safe place to stay, and mental health services. Okay? All the same stuff that everybody else is talking about here. Okay? It doesn't matter. Oh, you're going to go drug rehab, which was not his problem, but that's... But that's half of people diagnosed with mental illness are self-medicating with street drugs. But it's, "Oh, no, not just drug rehab. Oh, no, not just, you know, some time in jail. Oh, no, not just a little food program." You need it all. Where are you gonna lay your head tonight that's safe? Where are you gonna be safe and have food, not just tonight, for your future and get the mental health treatment? So come on, wake up. I can't believe that we're back here after, is this the third time? Is this the third time I've been back in this room, listening to this? I mean, it's not about you're embarrassed, but you should be embarrassed. Are you freaking kidding me? I looked at the pie chart of the county budget, okay? So we're the public, and we're the people paying taxes, and we're the people who have mentally ill family members, okay? Y'all are elected, and you're elected to do a lot more stuff than manage a budget. But when you look at the pie chart of the budget, guess what's the largest part? Law enforcement and incarceration right now, okay? So, yeah, where's the housing? Where's the food? Where's the mental health treatment? Wake up!
Amanda D.
Whoa. Hi, I'm a District One resident, and I'm gonna play another portion of Shaney Williams' -- I mean, sorry, Shaney Phillips' testimony, who is currently incarcerated within the SAC County prison system and gave their consent for this to be shared.
-- double the spot of the damn jail and lease the rest of the block for future expansion because it isn't going to get any better until steps are taken to make it that way. Right now, that just isn't the case. I'd like to say one more thing if I could. I've heard about the jail elevator. I had heard about the jail elevator early on in my career here at Maine Jail, but it was the place in the facility where police brutality happened because it was private and there are no cameras. I didn't think much about it until it happened to me. I was high and had just been arrested. I was being escorted to the elevators by a large female deputy and her smaller and younger partner. The larger woman took my arm, and I jerked it away from her, telling her not to touch me. I have sexual trauma and often don't like to be touched. She grabbed my arm and leaned it to my ear, saying, "Now we get to go for an elevator ride." My hands were trapped behind my back, and the woman spent the entire ride trying to break my arm and dislocate my shoulder, with her partner half-heartedly trying to help her do this. This is the first time I've talked about the experience for obvious reasons, fear of execution. Hopefully, nothing happens to me. I have witnessed police brutality one other time in Allen County. A woman had her arm broken and her teeth knocked out with a flashlight as a group of us were getting dressed out after being arrested. Police brutality is real, abuse of power is real, coercion is real. People really do turn a blind eye to things that are certainly unpalatable. People hope things like these aren't a problem where they live and then go about their day. I'm stuck in this system, and there is no way out for me. The system is broken, and people like to shut down states, and now they want to expand the jail without fixing a bad damn thing. There are criminals, and there are good people on both sides of the bar. We need to fix what is broken and stop making more spend mistakes. This is time on a larger scale, one of the days.
So if you couldn't hear that, they were talking about being escorted into an elevator where they were assaulted. Their arm was dislocated, and this was a person with sexual trauma, PTSD likely from that. And then another incident where another person's arm was, I believe, broken, what they said, from the same type of handling. This is totally unacceptable, and just want to echo everything that everyone else has said about how this conversation is still continuing to happen despite the fact that there has been no real connection to this, like, solving community problems and making the prison safer and making this community safer for the residents and for the people in the prisons. Thank you.
Adonai Flores?
Yeah, hello. My name's Adonai Flores, and I'm gonna be playing a continuation of that testimony.
Bet you have consent for it.
Obviously.
Not because of the people who are evil, but because of the people who don't do anything about it. This system is evil, corrupt, and without caution. The system labels the person criminal, felon, for life. I am this thing for life. Forever, I am untrustworthy. Forever, I am lost there. Because I made a choice, several choices actually, that seemed at the time to be the best of my options. Was I wrong? Maybe, maybe not. I'll tell you this, my other choices weren't great either. I don't think anyone grows up thinking they want to go to jail. No one actually wants this. So why do so many people have it? I think it's a lack of options, of opportunity. I think this jail expansion proves that criminality is not entirely the fault of the criminal. Mark, are we breathing with a community of criminals? Why is the criminal population expanding? And can we afford to consider such a large and apparently growing portion of our population as expendable, as disposable, as forever marked and branded? Or could we consider them myself as good as redeemable, as worthy of rehabilitation? Can we afford the overhaul it's going to take to make the system work through a population that is lost to the rat maze of recidivism? Can we afford not to? It will be costly and time consuming, but my life, any human life, is priceless. I am not disposable. I'm worth it. Please help me. Help us. Help yourself. Thank you. If they're locking me down, I have to go right now, but thank you for letting me do that very much.
Thank you.
Lindsay DeGenova?
Good afternoon. My name is Lindsay DeGenova, and I'm a resident of District One. I'm here today to comment on the county's $2 billion jail expansion project. As a resident of Sacramento County, I strongly oppose this project and ask that the Board of Supervisors commit not to just pausing or postponing this project, but to cancel and get it all together. So much has already been said by my fellow community members, so I'd like to briefly echo a few important points. This project is not only financially costly, but is also a step in the wrong direction in terms of how the county should invest in its residents and public safety. Rather than spending $2 billion on incarcerating residents of Sacramento County, the Board should be focused on investing and funding mental health and substance use programs, as well as creating affordable housing solutions and other preventative measures that reduce our incarcerated population. Decarceration and reducing our jail population and investing in community programs is a solution to the May's consent decree, not funding a massive jail expansion project that does nothing to change the culture of neglect that puts the county in its position in the first place. I urge the Board of Supervisors to hear the calls from its community members, including myself, and to cancel this jail expansion project once and for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Arza?
If you'll just give me a moment, I have a recorded testimony that I want to share out, and I just need it to load for me. So sorry about that.
And the reason I ask that you start with the premise that you do have consent each time you come up.
Of course.
It's for the record.
Yes, of course.
It's not that I want to pester you for it.
No, it's okay. I do have consent for this. Thank you so much for checking for the record.
Yeah.
Let me get it loaded for you. Thank you for your time. We're almost there, it seems. Okay. Of course, thank you for that feedback.
I've been here eight months now, and we only have 39 seats with 68 people. So every breakfast, lunch, and dinner, people are all looking at us first night to sit down. Older people gotta stand up on a wall, by the wall, or sit on the floor to eat, or the staircases, and it's just so horrible. There's 28 people that don't have a place to sit. So people are running the line, following down and stuff, trying to get to their line for the, to get their meal, and then, and then we got plastic dinner trays, plastic balls off, there's 50-year-old dinner trays that are plastic, and I would be spitting out when I'm eating. But it's just shocking. People are eating plastic, throwing up sometimes. They'll tell me they'll see pieces of plastic when they throw up in the bathroom. We found cardboard, she's asking for it, it goes on and on and on. It gives air mattresses that leak within a few days. They go flat. You got a half-inch mattress to sleep on, and you're on a metal plate on bunk beds that are metal. It's just a part of, you know, nowhere in jail. You know, and the guards treat us like we're trash, because we're innocent for proving guilty, some people even want to try, you know? And it just doesn't seem fair. People aren't medicine. They hand out medicine, like 20 people out of 68 people, and talk to them, "Get up, they're scrambling, it's 4:00. Get out of bunk, man." You cannot believe it, even the nurse would just stand around, you know? And I think anybody on a pill shouldn't have to get up because they're trapped. I mean, there aren't heavy medicine, it makes them sit on. If you say you're suicidal, they throw you in a room for two weeks naked. So, and I hear from people, you know, they throw out grievances, 90% are pretty much body tossing the trash, there's no way, you know, there's no monitoring on it or nothing. It's just so crazy. They make their own rules, they play God, you know, we're human beings in the United States of America, and this just doesn't seem right.
Just quickly for future reference, how clearly are y'all able to hear that, so we can make sure to try to improve it?
It's difficult.
Okay.
It's difficult.
Thank you for that feedback.
We hear it, we just can't discern kind of what they're saying, so.
Thank you so much.
Melanie? We have Melanie. And our final speaker is Lauren Nguyen.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Lauren Nguyen, and I'm a psychiatrist who's worked at UC Davis Hospital, the Sacramento County Mental Health Treatment Center, the Sacramento Adult Psychiatric Support Services Clinic, and the Sacramento County Jail on the Acute Behavioral Health Unit. I'm here today to demonstrate my strong opposition for the building of this expensive, unnecessary, and life-threatening jail. Ask anyone who's studied mental health or public health, and they'll tell you that it's understood as a field that jails and prisons are places where mentally ill people decompensate. The loss of rights and autonomy in the name specifically of punishment is undoubtedly harmful to the psyche, as I'm sure you all can imagine. And that's exactly what I saw when I worked at the Mental Health Unit at the SAC County Jail. The guards responded punitively, if at all, to calls for help, denied patients of being able to leave their bathroom-sized cells to see the sun, denied them of the ability to call their loved ones, and denied us providers from even being able to see our patients without guards' presence, which, as you can imagine, is not really therapeutic. I had one patient who is probably still there now, who has not been able to go outside and see sunlight in over a year. That's not an issue that gets resolved by a bigger jail. That's an issue of the guard's policies resulting in solitary confinement of an already mentally ill patient. Incarceration is incompatible with healthcare. It is unbelievable to me to even be talking about spending that money on an extremely expensive jail in the name of mental health, while we still don't currently have enough beds in our subacute mental health facilities and multiple community-based organizations promoting mental health are underfunded. Court-appointed monitoring reports demonstrate numerous stories of medical neglect here at the Sacramento Jail, and a bigger jail just will not fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our public comments.
Okay, I want to start by thanking everyone who, again, took hours out of their afternoon to join us and to provide your input on this important matter, and we certainly value your contribution, whether we agree or not. It's part of the beauty of our process that we hear from you and take that into account when we make the decisions that we do on your behalf. So again, many thanks. All right. Is there anything that County Council wants to mention relative to my earlier question about the disposition of Plaintiff's Counsel about this prospect of maybe taking more time?
Yes, I can certainly do that. Let's see, our office and the county executive office met with Plaintiff's Counsel a few weeks ago to discuss many issues, including this one. They have expressed at that meeting concern and dismay with the recommendation to pause the project. They feel that it is imperative to construct this project to address the mental health needs of the people that are currently incarcerated and also the other issues regarding ADA and intake that are outlined in that consent decree. That has been their position the entire time that we've been discussing this project. They have not indicated, however, that they will be taking any action or court action if we do pause at this time. They have given us a demand letter on some other issues that you may be hearing about shortly, but as far as pausing this project, they have not indicated any legal action.
Okay. Any questions for my colleagues of County Council? All right, see none. Anything additional that the county CEO would like to mention before we deliberate?
No, Supervisor Serna, I would just add that staffer are always here to answer your questions.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I don't see anyone in the queue. I guess I'll start. So for me, I think both staff, my colleagues, and the public have been, I think you're pretty knowledgeable about my, what I believe to be a fairly consistent position, where I've not been supportive of the project for different reasons. And it really is a unique position I feel placed in because, and at times uncomfortable, because I feel like I'm being forced down a narrowing corridor where I have to go through that door, and that's not the way to make good decisions about public policy or in this instance, relative to a legal order, a consent decree. And in the past, I've raised concerns about the extraordinary cost, the increasing cost. But there are other kind of parallel reasons why I really have a personal strong objection to investing more in this particular jail, where it's located, by the way. I don't think our main jail should be in the region's largest central business district in our downtown, one that's struggling to revitalize and to deal with things like the state of California, you know, closing offices. Of course, it's, you know, a relic of the pandemic that we continue to grapple with, those office vacancies and getting used to the new life of working remotely, those types of things all have posed a challenge for all downtowns, especially a downtown that is the state capital of California. So, and there's a lot of reasons why it's challenging to even consider building a new jail elsewhere. I'm not suggesting a new jail at all, but I have a lot of different parts of my constituency that have made very, very valid points, including many of you that have taken the time to speak to us today, about why this is not a good investment. And many of the speakers obviously really couched their concerns relative to the human side of things, which we should not, and at least I will not, you know, ignore. The fact of the matter is that where I think perhaps I disagree with some of you is that jails are a part of county infrastructure that I believe are probably always going to be necessary. There are going to be people that need to be incarcerated for their behaviors. So I don't want to, I don't want to miss, I don't want anyone misunderstanding what I'm saying, especially my colleagues, about my principled thoughts on the general subject of incarceration, and I think it's gonna be always probably part of our judicial law enforcement carceral system, so. It certainly behooves us to continue, regardless of the consent decree, to stay focused on reducing the jail population. That's a must. And, you know, we actually had some focus on that even before the consent decree was offered, was issued. But of course, that certainly puts the fire under us to act much more swiftly and thoughtfully about it. And in terms of being thoughtful, I also don't want our staff believing that just because they will not be supporting this resolution today, that I don't appreciate their thoughtfulness, and they have a different place in life when it comes to county governance than elected people. They are our professional staff, and so they are looking at options for us. That's all, that's what we expect, is to have alternatives and options, even when it comes to something as challenging as how do we meet the terms of a consent decree. So I want to thank all of our staff that have touched this particular issue before today and certainly going forward. today and certainly going forward. Your professional help is very much held in high regard by all of us. But today, I will not be supporting the resolution, and with that, I will give the floor to my colleagues. We'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, unfortunately, the period he's left, but in case he's out in the lobby or watches this later, listens to it later, I just want to say Terry Sharp, you are an inspiration, what an amazing glimmer of hope of why this system, as necessary as it may be, if it's done correctly, you have someone that comes out of it like that and just turns their life around and pours back into their community. And so I thank all of you for taking your time, but especially for him sharing his experience. And I want to touch on something that my colleague Supervisor Desmond brought up, and that I believe was Mr. Georgoff that also mentioned it, that there is progress being made on a lot of the aspects of the May's consent that are aspect, or I mean, excuse me, irrespective of the facility, but on how the policies are implemented, the treatment and care that's provided. And so I think that taking a pause is prudent and acceptable and warranted. I share a lot of the opinions just expressed by the Chair, even though we probably have different reasonings behind how we arrived at those opinions. And the difference is that he got to participate in a lot of the decision points along the way, whereas I feel like I've been handed a coloring book and a pencil. And so with those two objects, you're only going to get certain variations of the same picture. If you want to hand me a pencil, hand me a blank page, and if you want to hand me a coloring book, hand me a box of crayons. Let there be some options and some decisions. Now, maybe those efforts were made earlier on, but it seems like this report was examining the work of a previous consultant, and the previous consultant, in their defense of their work as a response to this report, said, "Well, that's not what we were asked to do." And so to the point of going down a narrow hallway, there were these guardrails put on all of these things that said, "Tell us how to build this aspect. Tell us whether or not the work that they did on building that aspect was good. Tell us..." And there wasn't, there doesn't seem to be the step back that I think is the point that's on the final conclusion page in red of what is the most economical way to abide by the May's consent decree. And in my mind, there are many different definitions of economical, and cheapest is not always the only definition. And in fact, even in our contracting, it's not always lowest bid. Sometimes it's best value, because there are other aspects that come into that. And I'll give you an example of my own personal life where I am not as frugal as I am in other parts of my life, and that's on a good pair of shoes. Because if you buy the cheapest pair of shoes, they might not last as long. As a shoe that's built well is going to last you longer, and it's going to give you the opportunity to resole it at a later date potentially, right? This is a weird analogy, and just stay with me for a second. Right now, all I've been asked to do is figure out whether or not the materials and the cost to resole an old pair of shoes is worth it. And I just, I don't feel like that's been a prudent exercise for me to date, hasn't been a prudent exercise for all the folks that showed up. And unfortunately, I think it's been a situation where the consultants have produced a lot of work, hopefully a lot of which can be salvaged, but that the larger overall question of what is the best solution going forward for the people being housed there, for the people that have to show up to work there, and for the care of the folks who have ended up there and hopefully can find a way to get turned around and into a better situation in life. So unlike the Chair, I am fully in support of the resolution today. I do want to explore those options. I do want to make sure that we're doing it right and that we kind of put all the cards back on the table. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. I couldn't agree with you more. Mr. Sharp's testimony was inspiring, and I wanted to tell him, I don't know why he was nervous, because he was extremely articulate. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I also want to start by thanking everybody who provided public testimony today. We, even though you may not believe it, we do hear you, and we do take it into account when we make decisions up here on this dais. And it just occurs to me, you know, I would love to have some of you here at other board meetings. I wouldn't wish that on anybody to come to board meetings unless you're fighting insomnia. But there are an awful lot of investments, a lot of decisions we make that are addressing a lot of the problems that you're mentioning today. Just yesterday, we approved, despite a lot of community blowback, tripling the size of a behavioral health treatment facility in Sacramento. And we have, and there are so many cases of additional low-income housing, affordable housing projects, permanent supportive housing, the state of state communities, investments this board is making in programs and resources to address a lot of the social issues that we are facing and that unfortunately result in some people end up being, finding themselves involved with the criminal justice system. I, you know, I really appreciate all the comments of the Chair, and I too actually agree with everything the Chair said. We may have a different result today in our vote, but agree with everything he said. And I look at this as an opportunity to really step back and take a much more comprehensive look at how we can not only address the May's consent decree, which I think maybe we've been a little too focused on that in the past few years, and how we can address changes in the larger, the master, you know, the larger system we have, criminal justice system we have in the county. And I like what Eric Jones described as some of your efforts already, certainly efforts including some of our advisory bodies involving them in this effort. I don't think, and I'm glad we had the discussion before public comment, that, you know, the work that has been done heretofore is not wasted. It's not as if we're starting over. It feels to me like we're stopping, we're suspending, and we're taking a larger look and maybe looking at things that we had not considered in years past. So with that, I will be joining Supervisor Hume in supporting staff's recommendation and the recommendations of CGL.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, I do want to thank the individuals that came and spoke and shared. I came into this meeting with a little more of a black and white view, and your testimonies and the information that you provided have really, in some ways, reminded me of things that I have valued in the past, and that is to see people rehabilitated from a life that they have lived, because I believe that, I believe that people have the good in them and that they want to do good, and that sometimes certain circumstances in our lives create a pathway for us that maybe we didn't intend to go down. And so I recently was quoted saying that our jails are full of people with severe mental health issues, and I do believe that today. I believe that we have, as a society, allowed the jails to become the psych wards that many, that we oftentimes were quoted back in the 80s. And we've made police officers, you know, psychiatrists when they need to address criminal issues. I actually will be supporting the recommendations today because I want to look at options. I want to look at, you know, having now been in this role for about, what, six, seven weeks, it gives me something that I want to understand a little, a little better. In my personal opinion, when I look at economic development, which is a really huge priority for me, I think the jail in the downtown area is detrimental to the health and well-being of the downtown Sacramento. And because downtown Sacramento is incredibly beautiful, there are many, so many amenities that Sacramento can utilize just to make our communities better. And the location, just to me, is not a good place. So if we're going to invest in some kind of a location, I think maybe somewhere different from the downtown area. Are there crimes that people commit that they should be in jail? Yes, I do. I believe that there are certain crimes that, as a society, we need to, what we need to protect you from individuals who may not be well and who need to be in a place where they are cared for. Let me see some other comments I have here. I want to talk a little bit even about like the recidivism rate. I, you know, I do want to see what other options we have to be able to help people not commit the crimes that they have committed and to get well, and whether it's through mental health programs or other type of programs, I would like to see what can be done. And that's pretty much all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Rodriguez. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. So, you know, I look at this as an opportunity to get more information and make better decisions down the road. I do think, first of all, I was not supportive the last time that the project came around because the costs were simply too high, and I will tell you that, you know, should this go forward and should the options that come back include a $2 billion facility, I will be voting no on that. But I don't see the harm in looking at a plan and a master plan to guide us with more information. One of the things, and some of my friends in the audience will know who I'm talking about, that we've had discussions over the years, and we've, you know, had some heated discussions, but always friendly, is my belief that we do need to make capital improvements or changes on the jail. It doesn't mean building a new jail or an annex or anything necessarily. We don't have that information, but we do. It's medieval over there. Some of the comments that were made from the telephones of the prisoners that are over there now, I think directly go to the fact that that facility is inhumane. And look what's happened since 1986 or so, since it was built. This county is twice as big as it was then. It had approximately 900,000 people, almost half of the population of today. We can't just ignore that fact. We have to, with Prop 109, we're no longer a jail system, we're a prison system in which people are living in conditions completely different than this building was, it was designed to do. And I've also had many experts tell me that, you know, the day this thing opened, it was obsolete. So I have been supportive, and I've been consistent in the need for, to rehabilitate that facility, to make the conditions better for those who are in it. That being said, I do, you look at the Swedish system, the Nordic system of incarceration, where they look toward rehabilitation far over punishment. I think that's very, very, that's the direction we as a nation should be heading in. I think that we're way behind in actually helping people and curing what is, you know, making people, putting them in the positions that they are, be it mental health, be it substance abuse. We need to do a better job of that, particularly with those that are incarcerated, and get them out of their, out of that system and out of the criminal justice system entirely. I believe that we need to do that. But even in Sweden, in the Nordic system, you know what they're doing right now? They're building new jails, even while they're focusing on rehabilitation over punishment because the facilities become aging. The facilities can no longer serve the need of the people who are in them. So I'm not going to write off spending money, capital improvements on a facility that is 40 years old and has intense uses and really is not serving the needs of those that it's supposed to be serving. So I will support looking, going forward to look at what our options are, doing more of a master planning process, thinking about this more deliberatively than perhaps we have in the past, but make no, you know, mistake. That is not a blank check from this supervisor. And I will be looking at balancing those things as far as the processes, procedures, and policies that need to be changed, along with making the conditions at that facility better. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, Mr. Hume?
Absolutely, sir. I just wanted to say that, I was going to say earlier, there's an adage that when you're on the wrong path, the quickest way to the right path is to turn around and go back. And so I want to go back to the fork in the road. And with that, I will move the recommendation to adopt the resolution to move forward, the CGL recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
That item passes four to one.
Right, very good. Again, thanks to everyone for being here and contributing.
Item three on the agenda is county executive comments.
My house is 80 years old and it's perfectly fine.
Excuse me. Thank you.
We can open after our session.
Thank you. We have, we're not, our hearing is not over. We have to conclude our business, please. Thank you. Okay.
Supervisor, no comments for today. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues? No, no comments? Okay. Again, thanks to staff, and there is no further business before this Board of Supervisors. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Supervisor.